The communications coordinator when I was mayor in 2018. This is his brainchild. And so if you really appreciate this format, this look with the blue curtains and you know, just the general kind of academy award feel of it. That's something that we, we work together to help deliver over the course of years. We truly do have an excellent city staff. And I think it's blighted by the fact, when you look at our volunteers, we really push ourselves. We push ourselves to think about what the really critical questions of the day are. We push ourselves to be able to reach out and help others and to be able to, through camaraderie, help solve some of the more intractable, intractable problems of, of humanity, really. And so I, I do want to thank our city staff. Esther Kwan, who is now the acting communicator, communications coordinator, brought this forward. Our new city manager, Jim Troop, Katie Nomura, our deputy city manager. We have Kavita Erthandran, who is out there in the lobby, helping coordinate. Our video crew, as Gary mentioned, is incredible. You can see that in the videos that were produced. Although, although Gary, I think they really went out of their way to make you look like John Wayne over there on the trail. So I, I think that that was very much owed. We have Ron Bolick here, the facilities manager of community hall. Torn Scott, working a camera, Michelle Martin, a couple of people who no doubt were heavily involved in the videos, Ray Delgado, as well as Pete Cogliani's. So you know, I, I think the take home message here is working together. We really make collectively Cupertino what Cupertino is. And so this is, I, I view a celebration of all of these various inner, inner operating parts that make our community what it is. And so I, I thank you for being able to bring forward all of that, all the best of us. And so I do want to close by stating that we have a very esteemed representative of our congressional delegate, Ro Khanna, here today. And so we are going to go ahead and provide certificates. Tom Pike from Ro Khanna's office, Congressman Khanna's office, is going to provide congressional certificates to our award winners because we're just that kind of community that we take it from the top down. And thank you very much, everyone, and have a great evening. Thank you.
Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a special meeting of the Cupertino City Council. Today is June 9th, 2022, and we are at eight o'clock, which is the start time of our special meeting. And so Madam City Clerk, if you could please conduct a roll call.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
And I'm here. Thanks very much, Madam City Clerk. And so for this meeting, we were continuing a few items from our June 7th regular meeting. And so what I'd like to do is to propose that we take the items a little bit out of order. I will note that the very last item that we have, after the study session, which we had on grant proposals, item 14, which is about our work plan, and then item 38, which was a combined CIP and budget item. We had 39, which is about our storm drainage system. And so the essential crux of 39 is not to raise the rates. I think that should be relatively fast. So what I would like to do is ask for a motion to hear 39 first, and then we'll get to 114 and 38, which is study session item number one. May I have a motion to that effect? Councilmember Moore, your hand is raised. Would you like to make that motion?
So moved.
Okay, may I have a second to Councilmember Moore's motion? And Councilmember Way, for the blink of an eye, I saw your hand raised, and there it is again.
I'll second.
Okay, wonderful. So again, this is to start our meeting with item number 39. There's a motion and a second on the table. Madam City Clerk, oh, let me go to our members of the public, actually. There is one attendee with a hand raised. That is Mahesh Pichala. And so if I may have a quick dialogue with my, my good friend, Mahesh. Mahesh, if you wanted to speak on the motion on the table, please keep your hand up. But if it is not about the motion on the table, please lower your hand. And I don't see your hand lowering, and so I'll go ahead and, and your hand is lowered. Thank you very much. And so I'm going to go ahead and bring this back to council. Did anyone want to make a comment on this? Again, this is just to hear item 39 first. I don't see hands raised. And so Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes, yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. All right, so we're on, and just to give everyone context, I think this is a really nice combining of our, our various major items for the upcoming fiscal year. We're doing it, I think, in an extremely timely manner. This is the first full week of June. And so in order, because they all kind of implicate our budget, you've got our grant funding, which was item one in the study session last time. We've got item 14, which was the work program, and item 38, which was the capital improvement program, again, combined with budget. And so let's go to item number one. And I'll remind everyone, when we tabled it, we were tabling a discussion that had already been presented. We had heard from the public, and we were in the midst of discussion. I'll remind everyone that the recommended action is to consider the recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Commission to approve funds in the amount of $96,460.46 for the fiscal year '22 to '23, or the upcoming fiscal year, community funding grant program. And part of the purview of council here is determine, is to determine and approve the final funding amounts for the community funding program to be included in the recommended budget for fiscal year '22 to '23, and, and to provide direction staff. I'm gonna go ahead and remind everyone, it's eight o'clock right now. We had to have a labor discussion in closed session at 6:30 this evening. And so we have, we have about four hours. This, of course, is the culmination of a lot of work that's been done up to this point in our calendar year. We have a lot of like, you know, great synergies here. But just to keep in mind that we want to be very cognizant of the time. And so what I'd like to do is basically say, for the community grant funding program, let's, let's take a collective effort to try to get this done within the hour. And then hopefully, the city work program, we can have a similar kind of effort. I, I think that the community funding grant program should be actually considerably less than that, frankly. And then we get on to the CIPs and the budget. And there, there, I do want to note that there was a request from staff earlier today from, from our city manager, Jim Troop, to try to, when it came to the budget, simply pass an operational budget, so to speak. And I, I think that the goal here should be to try to conclude this and see what we can, you know, go and, and front going into our upcoming fiscal year. But if we find that time is very much of the essence, and I'll be doing a time check in there regarding around 10:30, then we can start to look at the, the proposal from staff, which is basically to say, hey, look, you know, we need this to be operational as of July 1st, the start of the fiscal year. And so, you know, we'll probably scale back to that point if we don't look like we're, we're making progress to the point where we can conclude this, this corpus of items by midnight this evening. Okay, so we're back on study session item one. This is the community funding grant program. When, when we're back on discussion, and Madam City Clerk, remind me, and please confirm this, I, I think this is correct, we did not have a motion on the table when we, when, when we continued this item, is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, so we are in deliberation. This is item one. I can, I can put a default motion on the table, just to get things going. I, I think the default motion would be simply adopting the recommended grant allocations as, you know, examined and recommended by the Parks and Recreation Commission. And so I'll go ahead and see, Councilmember Way, would you like to set forth that motion for the purposes of further discussion?
Yes, please, I'll second that.
Okay.
Did you, did you move it, or do you want me to move it?
I'm asking you to move it, so.
Okay, so move.
Okay, thanks, Councilmember Way. And Councilmember Moore, did you want to second that?
No, I don't, actually. And I, I want to make sure that everyone's seen the, the written communications that came in for, for the day.
Okay, that sounds good. Well, for purposes of furthering the, the discussion, I will go ahead and second it. And that's just a reminder, that is, that does not commit us to the set of recommendations from the Parks and Recreation Commission. But I do want to be able to keep us in line with, you know, procedural, you know, formalities. And so we'll go ahead and continue the discussion. There's a motion, a second on the table. Councilmember Way, your hand is raised.
Are you ready to call on councilmembers to deliberate?
Yes, we're, we're beginning the deliberative process for this motion.
Okay, I would like to kick off the deliberation for a couple of very general statements.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay, so here it is. You know, I've been on many, many nonprofit boards, which I am still. This kind of discussion is always going on. What project do we support? Do we have, you know, way this, way that? They're all, all very good project. We have, if not hundreds of nonprofit organizations in our community, and they contribute, not just economically, but also humanitarily to our society, to Cupertino and surrounding areas. They're all great projects. So I don't think there is a right or wrong which one we pick. And first, I would like to make that we did authorize the Park and Recreation Committee to make the recommendations, so I would like to have mostly trust their judgment. Second, I would like to say is, I understand the, we might have say, we want to support newer, smaller nonprofits, which is a great concept, but there are many, many very established, but very good nonprofits that do projects in our community over and over. For example, West Valley Community Services, why do they come every time? Because they have hundreds of projects. Councilmember Willie mentioned about their mobile truck and mobile food truck, that's partly supported by Cupertino Rotary, with $25,000 on rent, and West Valley come up with other money. You talked about the pantry, that's also partly supported by Cupertino Rotary. And so these are really good organizations that's reputable, so I don't see any wrong about supporting them year after year with different projects or same projects. Same thing with, I, I saw, you know, Ubenish was Sister City. It's our sister city, when they're doing an event in our park, Memorial Park, to give them free facility, it's not free for them, it's free for our citizens to attend facilities, a great event. Same thing with full festival. So I don't see any, you know, problem with providing facility, in-kind donations, support for our very reputable organizations in our community. They contribute to our citizens tremendously. And for school district, that's serve our students. Whether 100% lives in Cupertino or not, it is students that they serve. Summer program cannot be open to 10,000 students, but they do pick students that need economically disadvantage. And as to, I think Councilmember Moore asked, if other cities support these nonprofits, yes, they do. Every year, I apply to West Valley, to San Jose, to Chapi, who is in charge of the West Valley area, the one section close to us, and he always supports the high schools foundation with a community grant fund. I know Sanovia does the same thing. So every city has grant fund that help the community, they're all really good causes. So two things I want to make is, everyone has a good cause, and I don't think we have a right or wrong in supporting who they, who we support. Second, these nonprofits are valuable assets to our community. Third, I do believe we empowered our Park and Recreation Commission to make decisions, and we could trust their decision-making. Third, school district are very close to our hearts. And, and fourth is, even though we consider some organization established, but they do great projects in our community. Rotary Club actually contributes over $150,000 to our community every year with over 30 to 60 projects per year. So I just want to say, there's no right or wrong, and if we have more money, yes, please support more. If we don't have more money, support what we can support. And I just, I do believe that there is nothing right around about who we support. And we do need to support them when they, you know, open up their time and their volunteering to, to do a festival. You know, our staff knows that it's not easy to give them in-kind facilities. That is just a minimum, full minimum, to support it, to, you know, give our residents a great venue to go to. So I, I just want to say, there's no right or wrong, and I would support all the projects if we have the money. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Way. Let me ask a question of staff at this point. So there are a number of requests for material and follow-up, and I'm noticing that we don't have a new packet for this. We do have written communications in some presentations. Is there anything from staff in follow-up to this item based upon our council discussion on Tuesday? Because I did ask for desk items, if that was necessary. Rochelle, you have your camera on. Is there a follow-up here from the various questions that were asked?
Yes, the memo that's in the, in, in the, what are they called? Written communications for this evening. That answers the questions that were from your motion from Tuesday night's meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Rochelle. I appreciate that information. And so let us go on to Councilmember Moore, with a hand raised, Councilmember Moore.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul, and thank you, Rochelle, for providing the information. I think we should have someone from staff put the written communications up on, on the screen for us and take a look at it. And.
Why don't we do that? Does anyone on staff have the written communications open and available to share at this point?
Mayor, I can share those if you'd like to direct me to which item you'd like me to open.
So that would need to be, I think, through Councilmember Moore, who has the request.
Okay, item number one, written communications, community grant funding program, written communications. It begins with an email from Omniware Networks and a clarification about their tax exempt status, which addresses the question that I had. And then the next item, community grant funding program, so we don't need to look at the first one, but the next one that says, updated attachment C evaluation totals and Parks and Rec Commission recommendation, desk item. We can actually scroll past that, and what I want us to be focused on after the policy is the blue and white striped table that shows the, the vendor, the invoice item, detailed description, fiscal calendar 2018, 19, 20, 21, and 22, and a grand total. So I'm very grateful that we have this information now. And then also in this packet, we have festival information, which I did not see the, I asked about this, I didn't see the festival fee waiver requests. And there's a, on Tuesday night, I, as an attachment, I sent in the requirements for, for festival fee waivers. Yes, yeah, just keep going, you know, keep scrolling down. So that's the, that is the information about the nonprofit status, so that is, it is current. And, and I did receive a, a call or a phone message from Omni Networks, and then we can pass through this, this memorandum on to, it's a blue and white striped spreadsheet right after the policy. There's one more, and then here we are. Now, if there's any way to, that this can be made larger, that's wonderful, that could help. Okay, so the first one we have, and I'm not even sure what this is, was $7,000 given to Heart of the Valley, then Women's SV out of the Mayor's Fund, $1,000. Chinese American Coalition Compassionate Care, $18,000. Silicon Valley Jewish Film Festival, $5,000. I won't read all of these. Some things of, of note, Cupertino Union School District, we're having, showing a total of 111,000. UFRAP Museum, 159,000. West Valley Community Services, 1,447,000. Rotary Endowment Foundation, 36,000. Rotary Club, 12,780. Reith California Bay Area, 6,500. Ubeneshwar, only 9,820. Fremont Union High School District, 514,546. The next page is interesting. It's the proposed fiscal 2022, 2023 festival, festival fee costs. And this, in my opinion, we probably should have seen this come to council already. So this might be a proposal, but because it is, to my knowledge, and I need to have this clarified, this is not part of this, the 96,000. And I look at festival fee cost waivers, and I think it should say that the waiver word in there, that is a grant. So, and, and this might not even cover, I'm not entirely sure if this covers the, the whole cost. But you can see, we've got $145,000 being requested, and that is on top of the 96,000. So when we, when we have the sheriff and public works and, and individuals needing to spend their time on these, these particular festivals, it is a cost to us. This is not free. And also, when you're looking at, in particular, the Chamber of Commerce, that's not a 501(c)(3), that's a 501(c)(6). It's a lobbying organization, they endorse candidates. They endorsed Councilmember Way, for instance, and they have a PAC. Their PAC has previously given $120,000 per, per candidate and opposed candidates, opposed, that PAC opposed the vice mayor, for instance. So I, I don't see why we would be gifting, because it's going to a political purpose, why we would be gifting funds to a lobbying organization in that manner. Also, I do have some concern with regards to the, the sister cities and equity, because some of the sister cities aren't receiving any waivers at all of, of festival fee costs. And so I, I think we should have complete information about this. I'm going to assume that the festival fee waivers are going to come back to council, but, and that this is not actually part of, of the approval tonight, that we're looking at just the grants. And I want to have, have that clarified. But I think that this fee waiver is part of the budget, but I, I need to understand that as well, from an accounting standpoint. And so I'd like to hear, hear that, and then I think I'd like to perhaps entertain a substitute motion.
Okay, well, let's, let's go ahead and entertain that substitute motion after we hear from staff in, in, in response to your comments, Councilmember Moore. And I do want to thank you for getting into the granular detail here. It's, it's so very critical. I, I think there were a couple of, couple of fact-check items. I, I just wanted to go back and, and just clean up a couple of statements. There was one, Councilmember Way, you had indicated that we empower the Parks and Recreation Commission to make decisions. I just want to just clarify, we're actually asking them to make recommendations. So let's just be really clear about, you know, the, the, you know, the ask there. And then, and then for Councilmember Moore, I, I think you make legitimate points, certainly. But the one that I want to clarify, and I'm not doing this from an advocacy-oriented perspective, but I just want to clarify that the Chamber of Commerce actually separates out their 501(c)(6) organization from their political action committee. And so to, to make the statement that giving money to the Chamber of Commerce 501(c)(6) is akin to supporting or opposing candidates, I, I think you make a good point as to, as to that aspect of lobbying of the organization, but they are actually separate, you know, separate entities there. So the, the chamber PAC and the chamber, and, you know, I, I just, I just want to make that clear, so that we're not.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. They, they donated money out of their, out of their chamber 501(c)(6) to the PAC. You can follow the money.
Okay. Oh, I just wanted to just make it clear that there is that separate legal, legal distinction. And so I, that I don't know about, that I don't, I, I know, in, in the interest of full disclosure, from 2010 to 2014, I sat on the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, and I was the sitting president, which, you know, came with its own, you know, travails in 2014 when I ran. But, you know, at the end of the day, I know that those are separate entities. In, in terms of whether the money actually came directly from the 501(c)(6) bank account to the PAC, I, I'm not sure.
Mayor Paul, I also want to mention a, an item that has been postponed. I wanted it to come before this discussion, so that it could all be transparent, brought out into the light, and it, it discusses the $65,000 given to the Chamber of Commerce for them to make a website to advertise the chamber, that the chamber has approximately 300 businesses. The city of Cupertino has over 2,400 business licenses registered with the city, so it is a subset of the businesses being represented there. So I, I wish that that item had, had not been postponed beyond this, but I think we need to have a, a full amount of information about that, that organization and the handshake agreements that have been made, the, the lack of accountability for funds that have been given to the chamber. I had this, made this request, I've asked about, you know, where's the contract for the money that's been given? And, and it, I, nothing turned up, there was no contract.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you very much, I appreciate that. I just wanted to clarify the, the, the legal distinction between those, those entities. And so, well, let's go, since our legal counsel does have a hand, or did have a hand raised, but doesn't anymore, let's go to our Director of Admin Services, Christina Alfaro. Christina, you had a hand raised, did you want to speak to any of the comments that were made by either Councilmember Moore or Councilmember Way? I'm imagining it's probably Councilmember Moore's comments, but did you want to speak to those?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to cover that the fee waivers were actually first presented as part of the proposed budget study session PowerPoint presentation. We get those after we're able to publish the budget, so we'll make sure we bring those in to council as part of that proposed budget study session for council's consideration, and so that they're aware of those, and then they get implemented as part of the final budget if council approves those fee waivers. But there is, it is not specifically called out as an action, but we did show them as part of the presentation.
Through the mayor?
Yes, please, go ahead.
I, I think we should have, I think it would be prudent of us to set a cap on this, because we're looking at having a budget approved, and I would consider, we have the 70 to $90,000 grant cap. I think this year, do, do a 90,000 grant cap on the festival fee waivers, and it should be, I would assume, similar. And it should be, I would assume, similar where you have the twenty thousand per entity. Maximum and the same five oh one C three designation requirement.
Yeah, no, thanks for that comment and the question, Councilmember Moore. You know, one sticking point for me personally is that I wonder how these fee waivers get placed on a list for request. Because, you know, back in two thousand and eighteen, when I was, when I was mayor for the first time. I started up our volunteer fair again, which was just a fantastically well attended and well received festival in the city. So what I've been hearing, you know, more recently is that as we didn't have the volunteer fair last year, but we had it. The prior year before the pandemic and we're looking, we were looking to start it up again in May this year. But it was pushed back to the fall, probably September. What I've been hearing is that, you know, staff was telling me, well, that's going to come out of your mayor's budget. And, you know, the mayor's budget is fifteen thousand a year. And generally speaking, it's allocated seventy-five hundred for the first half of the fiscal year, which is July first to December thirty-first. And then for the second half of the fiscal year, January first to June thirtieth, and those are usually two different mayors. So what I'm being told is that that entirety of that, that half. Prospectively is looking to be allocated towards the volunteer fair if we have it. So my question is, how do we get all these various other items on, on the list? But for something that is, you know, historically been there. Because I didn't invent the volunteer fair, it was, it was there in Cupertino long before any of us came on council, I just revived it. I'm wondering how do these items get onto this list for consideration of an automatic waiver? But, you know, the one that is obviously very well, you know, grounded in Cupertino history, but not actually, you know. And perhaps there's an application, but I do wonder whether it makes sense to, you know, basically, and I've also been asked. Oh, can you put all of your mayor's money into Bo Batino, which, you know, I kind of think, you know. Surely there's some kind of, surely there's some kind of mechanism if there are appetites from, say, the teen commission to have that kind of event. To fund this other than, you know, a discretionary funding that's relatively limited amount. And I will point out, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we have a very limited amount of discretion. As to, you know, things that we set forth in the city, you know, on our own as council members and as the mayor. So, so I just, you know, I appreciate this list being set forth. But at the same time, I wonder whether there are some fine tuning points we can make in order to. You know, I think better reflect the activities that we're putting forward as well. So I do see your hand is still raised, Councilmember Moore, let me give Vice Mayor Chow an opportunity. But before we do that, Councilmember Moore, you had stated that you wanted to place a substitute motion on the table. So why don't you do that at this point? And so we can entertain that substitute motion.
Okay, let me see if I can take a look at this. Essentially, it's with the, the same primary list that the, the city has provided. And I would remove CUSD and FUHSD Foundation and West Valley Community Services. At this time, and because we're providing within our budget even more funding to West Valley Community Services. For another, another program, which is far more substantial than the ten thousand requested here.
Okay, is there a second for Councilmember Moore's motion? Vice Mayor Chow, I see that you have your hand raised, would you like to second the motion, the substitute motion that Councilmember Moore has set forth? And Vice Mayor, you'll need to unmute yourself to be heard.
I'll second that.
You'll second the substitution, okay, very good. So we, we had a motion on the table, now we have a substitute motion. These are not enumerated, but if I were to look on page. Three hundred and three, super enumerated, page three hundred and three of our original agenda packet from June seventh. It is the, the organizations in green, which are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So there are nine of them that were recommended by the Parks and Recreation Commission. It would be the first, fourth, and ninth that would be removed, so then it would leave six more organizations to be funded. Okay, so Vice Mayor, let's go to you for commentary, and again, this is on the substitute motion that's on the table, and then we'll go to Councilmember Way.
I have a question, may not be relevant now, but just want to clarify. So if someone is a member of an organization that's seeking funding, I think there is no conflict of interest. But if someone is listed as officer or a member of the board, then is there a. I believe there is a conflict of interest, right? Maybe we need to vote separately, just.
Let's move this to our legal counsel, Chris, can you speak to that question from Vice Mayor Chow?
Yeah, I think that, 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 you know. Answering that question sort of from general principles, I think Vice Mayor Chow stated it accurately, that, that. So somebody that's, that's, that's a member of a board of a nonprofit or, you know. You know, certainly that if anybody that gets income from that nonprofit would have a conflict of interest in this kind of decision. And, you know, I would advise them to recuse themselves. Someone who's just a member of a nonprofit that doesn't. You know, have any financial or other interests that warrants recusal, I would, you know, that would be an issue.
So then if necessary, we will just spread the item into, and vote on them separately.
Okay, well, thank. Go ahead.
So the remedy for that conflict of interest would be to recuse oneself from consideration of the item. And leave the meeting.
But I remember then if one have to recuse themselves, they cannot even participate in the discussion.
That's correct, that's correct.
Oh, for that item, I see, okay.
Okay, so does that apply to the entirety of the item, Chris, or just to the vote on that particular organization in this case?
No, it, 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 it would, I mean, there are probably ways you could set it up, but the way this has been set up. I think particularly because you're talking about a finite pool of funds, I think that, and that, you know, this item has to group together. I think that the appropriate remedy would be to recuse oneself from consideration of the entire.
Let me ask if this is just kind of an academic question, are there, currently we have a substitute motion on the table. And the six organizations up for consideration, funding our Women's SV. Senior Services, Heart of the Valley, American Cancer Society Relay for Life. Omnipower Networks, the Buddhist Suu Kyi Medical Foundation, Breathe California at the Bay Area. I mean, does this apply, does this apply to any of our council members? Does anyone sit on the board of any of these organizations?
I'm on the board of the Fremont Union High Schools Foundation.
But that, that's not one of the, that's not one of the ones that are.
I thought that is one of the, it's not, then it's okay.
Fremont Union School District, I think that was removed by Councilmember Moore in her substitute motion.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, but let me, let me go to our legal counsel on this. So Chris, the Fremont Union School District item is part of the corpus of applicants and it is part of the original motion on the table. So how would you suggest that we deal with this in that instance?
Yeah, so, so. You know, so, you know, I apologize that this wasn't addressed earlier, but I think, you know. It, that the most prudent course would be for Councilmember Way to recuse herself if she is on the board of. Of the Fremont Union School District Foundation.
Okay, well, Councilmember Way, I think that that's ultimately your call. But it seems like recusal is the recommended course of action.
I'm okay with it, because, you know, as I said, these are all good nonprofits, whatever the money goes to, I don't see any right or wrong.
Okay, well, thank you, Councilmember Way, I'm sure that our city clerk will notify you. So Mr. City Attorney Jensen, so Hung can still participate as an attendee at this point, right, so that we can.
Yeah, if she wants to watch the meeting, it's permissible to move her over to the attendee and so she can continue to. Watch the meeting without participating.
Got it, okay, well, Councilmember Way, I'm going to do that now with your consent, of course.
Oh, sure, but can I make one last comment?
I, I don't know.
Not about anything, just about the festival, which is not on the, but I guess we can talk about festival later, when it's come with the agenda, right?
Oh, you're right, exactly.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thanks, Councilmember Way. All right, so I guess we're on Vice, I'm sorry, we're on Vice Mayor Chow's comments and then we'll go back to Councilmember Moore. I'll remind everyone that we have a substitute motion on the table, if that is voted on and doesn't pass, we'll go back to the original motion. The substitute motion is what we're discussing at this point, Vice Mayor Chow.
To be fair, I think we could also partition the item, right? So we can partition the Fremont Union Foundation one out. And then we can just discuss the rest together and then Councilmember Way can participate. And then we can vote on the foundation one later. Then that one, she just need to recuse herself from that one. Yeah, I didn't know that, actually, it's from her comment, I kind of get the sense. It seems she has certain personal interest, I get, I sensed that, then I looked up. And so, but I don't want, I don't mean to exclude her from the entire discussion, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I don't, don't hang the downstream effect on your, on your exclusive, you know, on your head. I mean, it's a legitimate comment, and at the end of the day, Councilmember Way has agreed to recuse. I'll point out that our legal counsel did point out that this is a finite pot of money. And so you're making decisions about what's allocable for one, you know, in a real sense to the exclusion of other organizations. So I, I will note that we do have a subcommittee for this particular topic of, of grant funding. And so that is part of the mechanics that certainly the subcommittee can and should be, should and can be looking at in the future. But let's, let's proceed at this point. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand no longer raised, and so Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised again. I don't see the hand raised for Councilmember Way, I don't have comments about the substitute motion myself. And so Councilmember Moore, after you make your commentary, I will call for a vote on the motion that is on the table, Councilmember Moore.
Okay, thank you, I just have kind of a procedural question, so who was the maker of the original motion?
The original motion, that's a good question, actually, that was Councilmember Way. Yeah, let me go back to our legal counsel now, so, so, so here we are, Chris. We have a midstream recusal of the motion maker. How would you suggest that we resolve this? And I realize that perhaps it would be a question best set forth to a parliamentarian, but, you know, here we are and we're leaning upon your. Good thoughts and expertise here.
Yeah, this, this, well, this is an unusual situation, so I, I think, I think we should look at. You know, to resolve it as pragmatically as possible. You know, certainly, since, you know, it's not appropriate for Councilmember Way to. Have, you know, really participate in the debate, I don't think, you know, that, I don't think the motion can really be. Voted upon without creating conflict of interest issues. She's not present to withdraw it, I think perhaps what might be cleanest is that if somebody else makes and, and, and seconds the same. Motion, and, and, you know, then council can vote on the substantive motion, substitute motion, and then. You know, vote on, I guess this was a replacement motion, and I think that's.
Why don't we do this, since we have the substitute motion and there's that original motion by a movement that is no longer here? Can we, can we remove the substitute motion? So as, who was the seconder of the substitute motion?
Vice Mayor.
It was you, Mayor Paul.
Okay, so I'll be willing to remove my second for the substitute motion, I'll take.
Oh, I apologize, I apologize, Mayor, for the substitute motion, it was, it was Vice Mayor.
Okay, so I'll ask the Vice Mayor if she would be willing to remove her second. And then as the seconder of the original motion, I'll go ahead and remove that second. Therefore, if that, you know, if the willingness of the seconders are both there, there's no longer a motion on the table. And then we can start over basically with a new motion. Does that, does that work from your perspective, Legal Counsel Jensen?
I, I think it does, it sort of clears the deck and allows us to start over without a conflict issue.
Okay, let's do that, so let me ask Vice Mayor Chow, are you willing to withdraw your second from the substitute motion?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I'm willing to withdraw my second from the motion that's on the table.
Mayor Paul?
Yes, Councilmember Moore.
I have a procedural question about that, so I have to say, for having made the substitute motion and having my second. I think that you could very simply just remove your second from the first original motion. If you felt, as we seem to see, that it was done in procedurally an error. So I, I do have a problem with having lost my second, it seems a bit, it seems a bit unfair. Just pointing that out, but if what you're saying is that I simply make it again and get seconded again, then that can happen. And then I might actually wish to alter it and bring in some of the other items in the list. Which Parks and Rec Commission suggested, which is if you have the money, they suggested we bring in Young Zine. So we could perhaps take a look at some of the other items further down on the list.
Yeah, okay, great, so I, I, I'm certainly not trying to be unfair, I'm just trying to be procedurally, you know, cohesive. But, you know, your, your comment is registered on the recorded record, Councilmember Moore. And so we are clean right now, there's no motion on the table, so let's go ahead and entertain another motion. Since our original movement is not here for the original motion, but our substitute motion movement is here. I will ask Councilmember Moore whether she would like to place a motion on the table at this time.
Okay, so I move that we approve the recommended action. And yet remove the FUHSD Foundation, remove CUSD, remove West Valley Community Services for the reason. Mentioned previously and add Young Zine.
Okay, so that is the next one down on the list, I note, in terms of the ranking order of the Parks and Recreation Commission. Is there a second for Councilmember Moore's motion? Vice Mayor Chow, I see that your hand is raised.
Oh, so we are adding Young Zine right now? A little different than last time.
Excuse me, according to Councilmember Moore's motion, she is, I think it might be Young Zine.
Young Zine, yeah, okay.
But, okay.
I'll second that, but I have a comment to make.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second on the table, and we will go to Vice Mayor Chow for the start of deliberation on this motion.
Okay, so. For, I think for CUSD, the, I have concern about the type of program that's offered. It's not open to everyone, even though our grant guideline doesn't seem to be clear. And also they are not five oh one C three, I think we should follow our policy. The, for the Fremont Union one, the foundation one, it's an online mentor service that also is not a one-time event. I think the intent of the grant is for a one-time event, and that seems to have, go over, all over the place. And also I think there are so many public agencies, if they all come and compete for our very tiny grant. And they, they all have, they offer, all offer amazing programs. Then it doesn't seem too big, people are competing at the same footing. And then for West Valley Community Service, the description that they have applied for. It's not a specific program, it's a description of their entire service. And it's not even a one-time event, so that means they can basically apply every year for whatever amount. That doesn't fit our grant guideline either. And this by no means is in any way speak to the value of the service they provide. And the city does provide them grants through the CPCTPG grant. And then other grants, federal grant that's specific is meant for the client that's served by WVCs and the specific type of program. They do serve, and then the CP, city has during the pandemic added the funding to serve their client. And I think those are appropriate use of grant, and if they do need, do have a unique program that do need city support, they could always. Do have a unique program that do need city support, they could always come and make a separate request for. For grant, but for this one, it's not an event. Uh, that's what this grant is meant for. And then for Young Zine, um, I think that program is great. But I was going to suggest that they should, they actually qualify for the wa- valley water grant. Valley Water, I spoke to their grant officer. They, their grant comes from a, um, um. A voter-approved by major, a certain percentage have to go to community grant. They say that they have money sitting there. That they never use up every year. It's sitting there waiting for people to apply. And this kind of environmental program fits right in their category, if, and they would even help. Community organization to write grant, to friend them so that it fit their funding guideline. So maybe we can fund them this year, but then I think we, I think in the future also besides our grant. Maybe the city can create a page with all these other funding sources. People can apply. Uh, besides the city grant that then with they are not relying only on the city. So a lot of high school program are great, like the Creek Side, like the, the highway cleanup program we had. Was funded by the Wat- Va- Valley Water Grant I'm talking about, and uh. The city could have applied, and they also found festivals, actually. And I asked what festivals they found in Cupertino. They found the, they gave funding for Rotary and Chamber. For their Holly and Diwali Fest- Festival, but the city did not apply for our Earth Festival, Festival. So those are things that grant options the city should even explore, and we should inform our residents. This extra funding for festivals for, uh, they want to host.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, let, let's go on to Councilmember Willie at this point. Um, I, I see a hand is still raised from Councilmember Moore. Um, Councilmember Willie, did you have some commentary on this uh, motion?
Yeah, thank you. So. We have the motion that's on the table, um, you know, I, I'd like to, you know, back up. I, I do like what Councilman Way said. All these um, organizations that have requested for funds are good, are good. Organizations and, yeah, we can, we can get into some of the details. Um. As to particulars about why they, they wouldn't be able to, to uh, get funds. Because of the, the, the details, dotting the i's and crossing the t's per our requirements. But I did like what uh, uh, Vice Mayor Chow said, you know, for a couple of those, you know. That maybe could get funds elsewhere and so on and so forth, but being able to fund them this year. Maybe we should update our manual and make it more clear. So that West Valley Community Services knows to identify specifically. What, what projects the funds would be used for, you know, like the, the, the way they got the, uh, the mobile food. Uh, uh, truck or uh, upgraded their uh, uh pantry. You know, the, I think they have so many uh, projects. And the fact that they didn't clearly define what the project would be, that without that funding. It likely wouldn't happen. Yeah, they'd like to do it, but they, they only have what they have. So in general, all these organizations are great. In general, uh. The particulars that might bounce a couple of them out, I think being a little bit more. Uh, generous in terms of uh, or allowances, allowing a little bit more in the way of allowances. So that being said, we have the staff recommendation. I, I support the staff recommendation. Um, but then I also support the uh, Young Zine, the uh, you know, to me. The name, I think they could use a little bit of a name change, you know, the Summer Youth Client Program. Climate, Summer Youth Climate Program. As I said on Tuesday night. True, you know, trying to get our next generation involved in important issues in our community. Both the, the, our community students and issues of importance in our community. What more could we ask for? And for their, their ask is only six thousand dollars. So there's that one. I also brought up on Tuesday night, the STEM Boost. Which to me really speaks to helping students, you know, um. Elementary school and middle school students to not only understand technology. But to more or less be able to understand how it might uh, help them and they could get involved. Um, and I think on Tuesday night, the answer from staff was, is that STEM Boost. Wasn't uh, fully uh, able to meet all our requirements. And so I'd sure like staff to try and revisit that once again, for, for something that's gonna help. Kids in our community, you know, understand and get involved and, and, you know, go places. That they may not go without some of these uh, items. So I think there's some other really nice ones, but I'll limit it to, to those ones. I mean, the Friends of Deer Hollow, I think is, you know, really a phenomenal thing. For not only our community, but the surrounding communities and to understand and appreciate, you know. How animals fit in the overall structure of things. Once again, without it. You know, how often in, in, in this Silicon Valley where we have paved and, and concreted over so much. You know, making whatever we can more accessible and, and these people are using volunteers and. And stuff, but they didn't ask for money this, this time, so I won't go there. I just wanna do a shout out for them. So my preference is to not shrink the, the bucket this year. To go with the staff recommendation, add Young Zine. Try and get staff to see if STEM Boost can uh, qualify. And if they could, I would support them also. Bubaneshwar, it was mentioned on Tuesday night. Well then, what do we do with all the other uh, uh, sister cities? I think the message also needs to go out to them all, that we welcome them, we want to encourage them. If, if we say no money, no, you guys go and do it on your own, we're not really encouraging. These people, we're not really welcoming them and saying, hey, we wanna work with you. And so, since Bubaneshwar did ask for funds uh, this year, fifteen thousand. But if we were to take the approach that for sister cities to be equitable. That we would want a, a, a number that could be applied. I think we have four sister cities. Something on the order of, you know, four thousand dollars per sister city, but the other ones haven't asked, great. But Bubaneshwar did, so if we were to lower the fifteen down to four, let the other ones know, you know, so. Uh, Toyakawa and the Cherry Blossom Festival, yeah, they're able to manage it on their own. But let's be a welcoming community. Let, let's reach out, you know, Cupertino. Get them to be able to have a, a festival.
Let me, let me, because, you know, in the interest of time, um.
So I think I've said where, where I'm after. I don't have that because I find it really tough to, to vote no on the motion that's on the table. But I wanna put that out, that I would much prefer to see us be a little bit more generous.
Okay, well, thank you for recording your comments uh, and sentiments on the record. So. Let me, let me just go to um, Councilmember Moore and Vice Mayor Chow, very briefly. Time check, we're eight fifty-four. I want us to wrap uh, by nine o'clock. I was, I was hoping we could get a little bit faster than that. But to the extent that we're being repetitive, please just table that. Um, and then I'll remind you that Councilmember Moore's motion is on the table. Um, and so we'll go ahead and go to Councilmember Moore and then Vice Mayor Chow.
Um, so I was wondering, well, well, first, uh, with regards to the, the festivals, there was a question. There is a, um, some, uh. Policy that uh, I, I sent in, um, it's a written communications uh, for, for Tuesday night. It was an, uh, attachments, um, showing that uh, with regards to the, the history of the sister cities. Um, having fee waivers, festival fee waivers, the fee waivers for um, the Toyakawa Sister City. Has been a, a little over thirty thousand dollars per year, around nine thousand dollars for Bubaneshwar. And zero for the other two sister cities. So that's, so we have a, a pretty, pretty big disparity there. Um, I was wondering if there's some, because uh, we're, we're, we've dropped the total funding. If there's some um, appetite for adding the uh, the Chinese American Coalition for Compassionate Care. Which uh, covers um, issues with um, uh, mindfully facing grief and loss. Uh, and starting the conversation is the, the program name and event, and, and I appreciate this. Uh, uh, because it, it, it is a, it is a, it is a difficult topic. Um, and I, I, I think it, it's covering an area that I don't think that, that we have. Um, touched on um, in the past, uh, with our, with our programming that the city's providing. And uh, yeah, I thi- I think it would be really beneficial uh, to the community if, if this, this could be um. Considered, and I would like to hear something about um, the Palisades Calico Challenge. Because we could bring those two items into the list, and then I believe that puts us into the, the grant range. Um, that we're looking for and, and, and could provide um, some good variety of programming, so.
Okay, so you, you're apparently attempting to change your motion, and so.
Possibly, possibly. I wa- I wanna hear about the, the Calico Challenge, but I, I might wanna. I, I, I would definitely like to, to see if there's support for adding the Chinese American Coalition for Compassionate Care. Because of the end-of-life issues and, and the grief, grief and loss topic. I think that that would, covering that would be a, a really wonderful thing.
Okay, this is what I'm gonna do. I have a uh, a hand raised from Vice Mayor Chow and a hand raised from Councilmember Willie. Um, so our uh, Assistant Director of the Recreation Community Services um, Department. Uh, Rochelle, remind me, is it called Parks and Rec now, or is it still Recreation and Community Services Department? I, I know we had a whole.
It is Parks and Recreation now.
Okay, so we went back to the code. Okay, great. So um, you know, Rochelle, you've been patiently waiting. We're into the deliberative process though. And so I would need to grant your um, leave to, to speak. Did you wanna speak on some informational material here? Or was there something else that you wanted to make?
I just wanted to clarify one thing.
Okay, why don't you make your clarification?
So, West Cal- Valley Community Services did apply for a specific program. It is called their Gift of Hope Program. And it is a program that they run during the holidays for their, the families in need. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, well, thank you for that clarification. Let's go back to the, the deliberation here. Um, so the question from Councilmember Moore was essentially whether. There would be a willingness to add uh, the Chinese American Coalition for Compassionate Care in the Palace, Palace, Palisades. Uh, Foundation, um, grant applications uh, to her motion.
Mayor Paul?
No, no, please. Can, can you please ask my question? Madam City Clerk, uh, can you tell me who the seconder of Councilmember Moore's motion was?
It was Vice Mayor Chow, Mayor.
Okay, so what I will do now is, um, you know, because we're already uh, right at nine o'clock at this point. Um, let, let me, let me ask the seconder, uh, Vice Mayor Chow, whether you would be willing to um. Uh, make that amendment to the motion on the table, since the movement, it's uh, herself is asking for that. And, and I realize it was, you know, it was a request.
I need some questions answered first.
You'll need some questions answered first, okay. So, so let me, let me just suggest this, okay? You know, when, when I allocate time for an hour, you know, when we have a motion on the table by the original movement. There's no reason to add two more, uh, you know, two more organizations as this is going along. As we're not adding more information. You know, I, I'm, I'm simply trying to do this in an efficient manner. And so to the extent that we don't need to make gratuitous comments, um, you know, focus upon the motion that is on the table. All right, so Councilmember Moore, you wanted to make some um, modifications to your motion, and you're seeking commentary. Uh, so i- is this something that we really necessarily need to do at this point? From the uh, perspective of your, uh, your motion, or can we essentially say? Let's um, go ahead and, and put this on for a vote. Uh, because I don't know precisely how long that this is uh, going to take in terms of a deliberative process. That seems to, you know, not really have a finite end if the movement uh, is making some modifications. That could have been made from the original motion itself.
Mayor Paul?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, okay, so uh, at issue is that when I tallied up the um, the, the grant amount.
There's no rule that says it needs to be this amount of money.
Well, the, the, I'm trying to stick towards the policy that we have, which is the range of seventy to ninety thousand dollars. So when I added it up, it ended up uh, below that, and I thought, well, perhaps there are other. Other um, potential grantees on the list that we could add and put it into the range. And uh, in, in feels though I'm following the policy that we're following the policy uh, amount, and so that's, that's what I'm thinking there.
Okay.
And, and also after hearing the West Valley Community Services, uh, for, for the, the Gift of Hope, that, that, the. Putting the ten thousand in there puts the numbers squarely in, so you're looking at the Palisades. Calico Challenge, Chinese American Coalition for Compassionate Care, and the West Valley Community Services Gift of Hope. Added on to um, the, the original grouping.
I think you have Young Zine in there.
Young Zine, yes.
Okay.
Right.
All right, let me, let me ask Vice Mayor Chow. Vice Mayor Chow, are you willing to make that the um?
I need to ask my question first.
Okay, please proceed.
Okay, for, for Young Zine, uh, from the program description, it's unclear if the program is free or not. I found their website. The three-week program they have is cost five hundred dollars. Even though they do provide need-based assistance, but the program description says that they will use the funding to develop. Pay teachers to develop the program, which I think they have probably are, have already developed. So if we fund them and we don't fund STEM Boost. We are not funding someone because they are more honest. I don't feel comfortable with that. And I think we are trying to stick to the intent of the grant. The reason is many other organizations could have applied, but they did not because they think they don't qualify. And whenever we open it up and relax our rule, we are again. Great, giving way to someone who are not following the rule. I don't feel comf- I don't think that's fair to the people who self-select not to apply. Because they don't think they qualify as an event, for example.
Let, let me refer this question to our.
They have a, another question.
I wanna cut you off there because I, I, I don't think it's appropriate, having gone through a Parks and Rec Commission. Uh, vetting process to be insinuating that a particular grant applicant is not following the rules or is, or is, or is making misrepresentations. So, so, so Rochelle, do you have a commentary as to that and how uh, this particular applicant was vetted? Are they, are they making any misrepresentations based upon the application and the vetting process there?
So originally, they were one of the applications that was put under the, the Parks and Rec Commission had to decide. Because our policy states that they can charge, however, it's up to the Parks and Recreation Commission. However, within the Parks and Recreation meeting, the Young Zine um, stated that they will no longer be using their funding for that. They will be using it as scholarships for the kids, so they will be using it toward the children, not paying toward their program.
Okay, and is that now reflective of the website that Vice Mayor Chow is pointing out?
Um, she's actually pointing out their application, and that is their original application. So when, if they are funded, their agreement will show that it is not for, it is for the scholarship purpose.
Okay.
That's good to know, and that's actually something I expressed an interest to fund the last year. However, this very good use of city fund is not within the current grant, community grant guideline either. So last year, when I expressed that, we said, okay, we will form a subcommittee to look at funding additional. Things like this, providing assistance for the kids who couldn't normally afford a summer camp. things like this, providing assistance for the kids who couldn't normally afford a summer camp can afford them. But that particular thing then does not fall under the current guideline because the event should be open to all. And this event is not free and open to everyone. So although I think that something definitely I already said I would like to fund, but we couldn't last year because also the same thing. And another question I have regarding the compassionate care, that sounds like a really interesting program. And but the Parks and Rec did not recommend to fund them. And I find out that here is compassionate care. And this is, thank you for this wonderful table. That's all the funding that we have provided for different organization over the years. And this particular organization, we have given them funding in twenty twenty one, six thousand, twelve thousand in twenty one, twenty two. And now they are requesting more. And so I wonder the reason they are not chosen, is it, do we have any concern about the program they had provided before? Or?
Okay, let's go ahead and go back to staff at this point. You know, we're Rochelle, do you have any comments on that?
Yes, so I don't have any Parks and Rec Commissioners here tonight, but during the meeting, there was a thought that they wanted to try to fund more organizations that hadn't been funded year after year after year. So that kind of was more of the direction they took this year.
I see. So there is no specific concern about this particular program. That's good to know. So. Okay, I'm done.
Yeah, the question on the table, Vice Mayor Chow, is whether you were willing to entertain a modification as the second or of a motion, which would have added that organization for compassionate care as well as the Sados.
I'm leaning towards not funding Yang Zhen, but adding comes West Valley Community Services back, which I agree with Councilmember Moore. The compassionate care, I think they are providing essential service we need during the pandemic, even though we are funding them continuously. I'm fine with that.
Well, I will, I will say this, I would support adding Yang Zhen to there. In my preparation for the Millers Cup, I did take a couple of meetings with that organization. And to me, it seemed quite worthy what they were doing. So, so, so I mean, for whatever that's worth. In terms of the Palisados Foundation, I, I don't really have as strong a familiarity with it. It gives me a little bit of pause that it's fairly low in the Parks and Rec ranking. And so that's, that's my concern there. So I see a nod from Councilmember Moore. So can we maybe, can we maybe do that then? Add West Valley Community Services back, add Yang Zhen, and then add Chinese American Coalition for Compassionate Care to the, as the motion? Is that workable?
I would not, I would not fund the Yang Zhen because they don't qualify on either the original purpose or the modified purpose under the current guideline. If we fund them, like I said, it's unfair to the people who did not apply for an assistance to underprivileged children, privileged children. And many summer programs would have applied for that. And they did not. It's not really fair for them.
I, I.
I mean, it's a wealth, it's a great program. And like I said, they can apply for Valley Water Grant. And I, this has nothing to do with the.
Let's not repeat our reasons. I will, I will cede to that. That's fine. Councilmember Moore, are you okay with? And Rochelle, if you could, let's just deliberate now. So I appreciate your, your enthusiasm about this, but let's, let's just leave it to council this time. Councilmember Moore, are you okay with just adding West Valley Community Services as well as the Chinese American Coalition for Compassionate Care at this time to your motion?
Yes. And just for clarity sake, is that all right if I just read them really quickly?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, so we have West Valley Community Services at ten thousand, Women SV twenty thousand, Senior Services Heart of the Valley, six thousand one hundred and sixty dollars and forty six cents. American Cancer Society Relay for Life, six thousand, Omniware Networks, two thousand, Huda Suchi Medical Foundation, eight thousand three hundred, Breathe California of the Bay Area, four thousand, and the Chinese American Coalition for Compassionate Care at thirteen thousand.
Yes, that's correct. And Vice Mayor, can you confirm that as the?
I'll second. Thank you.
Okay, so at this point, I'm going to go ahead and call in Councilmember Willie and then let's take a vote. Councilmember Willie, your comments?
I think that might adjust. So is Yang Zhen not there then?
Yang Zhen is not there, no.
And FUHSD is not there?
FUHSD is not there, no.
So can't Councilman Wei participate since FUHSD is not there?
Uh, no, based upon the advice from council, because it's a limited pot. And FUHSD is part of the consideration. The recusal recommendation was to recuse entirely for Councilmember Wei for this.
So, okay, what I was gonna do is I thought I was prepared to make a substitute motion, which is the staff recommendation plus Yang Zhen. But since Councilman Moore's motion now picked back up, well, I'm still gonna do that because so, so yeah, I'm going to move the council, the staff's recommendation. And I'll leave it at that. And now if somebody wanted to bring something else into it, I'm good with it, but I would move the staff recommendation.
Or the Parks and Recreation Commission recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, well, then let's do this. I'll see if there's a second for your substitute motion. Is there a second for Councilmember Willie's substitute motion? Councilmember Willie, I don't see a hand raised. And so the original motion stands. Do you have any further commentary on that motion?
No, that's what I was hoping to find out if there was support. So, thank you.
Well, thank you for, 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 for bringing that and making the attempt. We will go ahead and conduct a roll call vote on the motion that is on the table. And so Madam City Clerk, if you could conduct that roll call vote.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei? Or apologize, Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries with Wei recused.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And so we're on to the next item on our agenda. And so for that, I'll go ahead and bring back Councilmember Wei. We'll go to the storm water fees. And so we did not, we did not actually have a presentation on that. That's item thirty nine. And so for this item, we will be taking public input after the staff presentation. And so let me take a brief look as to where are contemplated. I don't see, I don't see a presenter here. And so I'll refer it to our city manager, Jim Troop. I imagine it's probably either Director Morley or perhaps Chad Mosley. But City Manager Troop, did you want to?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Actually, Ursula is here. So she was.
Oh, Ursula, great. Hey, Ursula, how you doing? Welcome. And item thirty nine again is to consider the approval to renew with no increase nineteen ninety two storm drain fee and the two thousand nineteen clean water and storm protection fee. So welcome, Ursula, take it away.
Thank you. I will go ahead and share my fairly short presentation here. Hopefully that is visible to you now. Alrighty. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I am Ursula Sarova, Environmental Programs Manager. The city has two property based fees in place to support compliance with the municipal regional permit as regulated by the California Regional Water Control Board and to support storm protection infrastructure work on our storm drain system. These fees require an annual renewal process in advance of the county assessing the fee on individual properties via property tax bills or direct billed by the city. My presentation should take just about six minutes. So the applicable rate for the nineteen ninety two storm drainage fee are as shown here. Certain entities are exempt from this fee such as the city itself, the county, the fire district, and schools. Here are the current rates for the twenty nineteen clean water and storm protection fee, which is sensitive to land area and land use commensurate to the cost to provide the service. This fee is applicable to all properties, including school district lands and city owned parcels that are exempt from the nineteen ninety two fee. Council has the option to increase the clean water and storm protection fee at CPI with a three percent cap if actual program expenditures increase or fund balances insufficient to cover shortfall. We recommend renewal of this fee with no increase for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. Here are just a few examples of the preventative, responsive, and educational activities funded by our two fees, which ensure our compliance with the stormwater permit to prevent pollution to our creeks and bay and maintain our storm drain system. Nineteen ninety two fees remain the same each year. And while the clean water fee does allow for an annual increase up to three percent, staff is not recommending any increase to the clean water fee for twenty two, twenty three. While expenses for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three are expected to be above the revenues, there is an eligible balance in the Environmental Management Clean Creek Special Revenue Fund, Fund Two Thirty, to cover the difference. The current balance of this fund accumulated as the city transitioned from storm drain maintenance costs being funded by the general fund to being funded by the clean water fee, as well as lower expenditures during COVID and then coming in under budget on expenses. As it is not intended for this fund to carry a significant balance, the use of this balance to pay for expenses that have exceeded revenues is appropriate. Expenses are forecasted to continue to exceed revenues. And if this does occur in a future year, we may recommend an increase to the clean water fee up to the three percent CPI limit as is allowed. One potential area for increased expense is what will be required to continue meeting the requirements of our municipal regional permit. A new five year permit was adopted in May and will be effective July first of this year with certain requirements phased in for twenty twenty three. Several new and expanded requirements will take additional staff time, coordination, and investment in green stormwater infrastructure. This view makes it easier to see at a glance the changes to the provisions in the new permit. And then we wanted to touch on the annual budget for stormwater pollution prevention. Storm Drainage Infrastructure Program includes money for several rainwater capture rebates and a cost share program for low income residents. The rebate programs each have a first come, first served maximum budget of twelve thousand five hundred. That could mean, for example, rebates for up to thirty seven projects that incorporated both a rain garden and a rain barrel and close to seven driveway projects at the maximum rebate. Participation in the rebate programs has not been as high as we would like despite outreach through Valley Water and the Climate Victory Gardens program. Palo Alto, which has similar programs to ours, also reports low participation for these types of projects. We will continue to promote these programs. Regarding permeable pavement installation, council did increase the maximum rebate amount last year from nine hundred to eighteen hundred dollars to accommodate larger pavement projects. And in the past year, one project applied for the rebate and received over fourteen hundred dollars. The cost share program is available to low income property owners. Two hundred and thirty one people have already qualified for this and now see a reduced fee on their property tax bills. But more residents are likely eligible to receive the fee reduction. So we will continue to reach out to those who may qualify. The non-point source program and storm drain maintenance revenues and expenses are annually audited during the regular external audit. Additionally, we worked with finance staff to establish a new agreed upon procedures audit so that a full calendar year of expenses and revenues will be audited prior to bringing this item to council each year. The twenty twenty audit was completed, but the twenty twenty one audit has not been finalized yet. So both twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two are expected to be reviewed by the audit committee before we appear at council in twenty twenty three for the next renewal cycle. Here are the recommended actions for tonight, which are to renew both fees at no increase. And that concludes my presentation. I leave you with this detail from a poster created by Cupertino ninth grade student Jessica Kwan Do, a winner of the recent Santa Clara Valley Urban Runoff Pollution Prevention Program Earth Day Poster Contest. I am happy to answer any questions that council or the public may have.
Great, thanks very much, Ursula. Let's go on to our members of the public now to see if there are any comments on this. This is again item number thirty nine. Item number thirty nine has to do with a storm drainage fee. And there's a recommendation of no increase. I don't see any hands raised from the public here. But as we're waiting for that, that possibility, let me just let people know that you'll be provided three minutes to speak. And within the time allocated for the first person to speak, you'll need to have your hand raised in order to be recognized to speak on this item. And then you can also consolidate your time if you like, up to a person, up to a total amount of ten minutes. If you consolidate your time, you don't have the time for yourself individually, but you can have more time for one single person. I don't see any hands raised at this point, but the final way to make commentary would be to email in this context, cityclerk@cupertino.org. But apparently we don't have the, the hands raised at this point. So let's, let's take this back to our city council for deliberation. Are there any questions, first of all, of council of the presenter of the presentation? Councilmember Moore, your hand is raised. Did you want to ask a question or perhaps put forward a motion on this?
Well, question first before I go with the recommended action. So I'm looking at the budget and there's three special revenue funds that relate to, to storm drains. We have a storm drain improvement. That's the two ten fund. And it's beginning fund balance, looks like two point four million projected beginning fund balance for this year, three hundred and sixty eight thousand. Then we have Fund Two Fifteen, the Storm Drain AB sixteen hundred fund. I could not find a description of it. So I'm wondering what that one is for. And that's showing about one point seven million dollars and, and with some projected revenues. That's the one I'm really curious about. And then we have this Fund Two Thirty, the Environmental, Environmental Management Clean Creek Storm Drain Special Revenue Fund. I'm wondering if, is, is any amount of this funding within this fund able to be used towards a storm drain improvements at all? And then are, should these, should these funds all remain separate? And, and as I said, what is the, what is the purpose of the AB sixteen hundred storm drain fund? So it's kind of maybe someone from finance could answer that question too. So I, it was a little confusing seeing these three funds and what their purpose was.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a hand raised from our city manager. Jim, did you want to speak to Councilmember Moore's question and comments?
Yeah, I'm doing one. And Christina and Thomas are looking at the other ones real quick. Just see, excuse me, that AB sixteen hundred one, would we really be like, impact the fund? So it would be when we have to expand the storm drain system for any new, you know, if there's a housing system going in or buildings going in, something that expands the need, that's what that one would be used for. I don't know if Christina has the other one yet or no.
Okay, and that, and then through the mayor, that's where it's a little confusing because two ten is called the storm, storm drain improvement. So that, and I realize we've had, we have new people coming on board and I'm asking kind of detailed questions about this. So it may be that we can get the answer offline. But I, I'm just wondering if, what exactly, if we could just have a kind of a refresher on this Fund Two Thirty, what its particular purpose is. I'm wondering if we might have some overlap.
Yeah, if we can, if we don't have it now, we can definitely get it for you. I have not memorized all the funds yet. Christina said she's looking it up right now.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll remind everyone that the recommended action again is to set the fees static. And that would be the consideration of the adoption and approval of Resolution two two dash zero six eight, which is Attachment A to the item approving the renewal and collection of the nineteen ninety two storm drain fee with no increases and rates for fiscal year twenty two to twenty three upcoming, starting on July first. And then Resolution number twenty two dash zero six nine. And then Resolution Number 22-069, which is Attachment B to the item in our agenda approving the renewal and collection of the 2019 clean water and storm protection fee with no increases in rates for the fiscal year upcoming, 2223, starting on July 1. So Councilmember Moore, you had indicated that you would move the recommended action. Are you still inclined to do so?
I'd still like to hear a little bit, am I muted? No, I'd still like to hear a little bit about what the purpose of this particular fund is. It's not particularly clear to me. So it's not, it doesn't, it's for, I'm hearing education, but...
Well, I'm sorry, what particular, you're not talking about the fund that we're...
The fund that we're holding the fee static for. So could we see the slide that explains what the fee purpose is for? I think that would help, just so I can keep it clear when I'm asking my questions about the other two funds moving forward.
Okay, this is not exclusively for education, if it's that. It is to fund the infrastructure that's needed to be maintained or built out. But Ursula, if you could, and I'm not really clear, Councilmember Moore, on what your question specifically pertains to, but the two resolutions that are under the recommended action have to do with the 1992 storm drain fee and the 2019 clean water and storm protection fee. And so...
Correct, and I'm looking at the, Mayor Paul, thank you. I'm looking at the municipal code, which was approved, and I just want someone to point me to the section in this code, which tells me what the, where the fee, what the fee is going to be used for in particular, because I'm not, for some reason, I'm not able to grab it really quickly, and when I went through the agenda packet, it was not very clear. And so when I ask the questions about the other two fees, I want to make sure that we don't have overlapping purposes of these fees.
Sure, I mean, I can speak a little bit to Fund 230, which is where I, the umbrella that I dwell under, and it really is about complying with our municipal regional stormwater permit, which is under the Clean Water Act. So it does cover a variety of activities. Education is part of it, but also we do proactive inspections of over 130 businesses every year to make sure that the back of house has no potential discharges to the stormwater. We respond whenever an illicit discharge happens, we go out and make sure that's all cleaned up properly, including clean out of the laterals and, you know, other parts of the system. Every time a water purveyor has a leak, we make sure that they suck all the sediment back out of our system again. And with the 2019 fee, there was some added scope, I would say, to help maintain our infrastructure. So there's potentially, you know, some overlap of potential uses, but I'm just not familiar enough with 210 and 215 to speak to that. But our 230 is really about the municipal regional permit compliance.
Through the mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Moore. And I'm sorry, I hear somebody else looking to speak.
Chris.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have raised my hand. I could just add to that answer. So, I mean, and the purposes of the fees are listed in Chapter 336 and 338 of the municipal code. There is, I think, you know, if you look at those purposes, it will, you know, I think you'll conclude that there's some overlap that's, you know, likely due to historical reasons, but the change in law as to how these fees are assessed, you know, without looking at too much of the detail. And so I think that probably explains why they're two separate fees that do similar things.
And through the mayor, is there some way, or is it already being accounted for, to ensure that, or does it matter, is it relevant, how the golf course is fertilized, if it's using fertilizers which could drain into the creek and cause environmental damage or not? And could this fee be also used to help, essentially, help with any additional costs that could be incurred, making a switch to more environmentally friendly fertilizers, for instance? Is that something it would cover?
We do track all pesticide use in the city. We get reports from all the applicators. We encourage IPM, integrated pest management techniques, and we're actually working on a, you know, a plan for the corridor specifically along Stevens Creek to really drill down more into that issue of what's appropriate to use. But we are, you know, using good management practices, and the golf course in particular takes good care in that realm, from my understanding and talking with the applicator who's in charge out there.
Yeah, no, it's a reasonable comment. I mean, you know, we could go pretty far afield on all of this, but at the end of the day, this is about whether we hold the fee steady or we increase it, you know? And so it's not within our purview to cancel the fee, so, I mean, or diminish it. So I would like to ask for, you know, and I will say, I can go far afield, too. You know, Ursula and I were, you know, talking offline over email about, you know, tires and the fact that, you know, basically plastics are coming out off of tires and really, they're really quite an appreciable issue, and that, of course, would implicate storm drainage as well. But, you know, with all respect, in the interest of time, let's just try to figure out whether we want to raise these, you know, fees or hold them steady. I would like to hold them steady. So if no one is going to bring that motion, I will go ahead and set that motion forward and ask for a second at that point, at this point, rather. Councilmember Moore, would you like to second the default motion that is on the table?
Yes, second it, but one of the things that...
But Councilmember Moore, let me give another council member a chance to speak at this point, and I'll come back to you. Councilmember Willie, did you want to speak to this default motion?
I was just going to second your default motion. No other comment.
All right, I appreciate that. Councilmember Moore, you have the floor again.
Simply that I think we need to have staff review the storm drain improvement special revenue fund 210, 215, and then 230, and perhaps see if there is some overlap that needs to be changed, and then let us know what the definitions of each of these funds, how they were created, what they're for. Because there's a considerable amount of money sitting in the storm drain AB1600 fund, and we might have some projects that should be using it up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. Yeah, and I will say that, you know, these just ramify to a lot of facets. I mean, you know, in the last drought, we actually didn't have much use for the, well, I would say in the prior drought to what we're experiencing right now, a lot of the detritus kind of accumulated, and what we were finding was that there was a lot of backups from our storm drainage system. And people around the city, once the water came back, you know, one season, were experiencing significant amounts of, you know, water flooding in some parts of the city. And so what ended up happening was that that year, we actually spent quite a bit of money to kind of clean out the drains, and that kind of gave us a little bit of more awareness of the need for funding to maintain that even in times of when there's no water and we're not noticing, you know, the flow issues. And so I think that basically kicked off some consideration about trying to find additional funding. But, you know, to your point, Councilmember Moore, I think it is a good idea to constantly be looking at, you know, the various sources of funding and whether we're using them optimally. But, you know, again, at the end of the day, this is about whether we hold this, you know, rate steady, and I'm very appreciative of the motion that's on the table, because when we passed this in 2019, or at least placed it on the ballot, or the mail ballot, I should say, you know, I said, as long as I'm on council, I will not be voting for any increases. And so I'm glad to be able to make good on that commitment. So if this passes, of course, or at least, you know, even if it doesn't pass and we have another motion, I'm going to be voting against it if it's an increase. In any event, I don't see any further hands raised, and so Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote on the motion on the table?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, great. So we're at 9:30 right now. We started around 6:30 with closed session, so let's go ahead and take a brief break. We'll come back at 9:38 and get into the work plan item, which was originally consent calendar item number 14, that was polled and brought forward to this evening. And so we'll see you in a few minutes. Thanks. 14, and the subject was a final priority ranking of our adopted fiscal year 2223, again, starting on July 1, city work program. The recommended action was to receive the final priority ranking of the adopted fiscal year 202223 city work program. And so, Jim, who is providing this presentation for item 14?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, we have Astrid Robles. She's stepping in and stepping up to help us out, and she and Katie also worked together on this throughout the whole process, so she's very well versed in.
Okay, great to hear it. Welcome, Astrid. Thanks.
Great, good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. In summary, I'm here to discuss the consent item today on the city work program. So this item was brought to council on May 17, and this item was actually adopted with modifications and then requested to be reprioritized one last time with all the 38 items that were adopted that day. And so attached in the packet was Attachment A. Council members' ratings were compiled into that attachment, and I have it here, which I can share. Earlier today, I got a request to modify the attachment to include council member names, so I can go ahead and share that with your permission, Mayor, right now, to show the attachment here. I'm going to go ahead and share.
You're unmuted, Mayor.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much, Astrid, thank you, Jim. So a little bit of context on this one. When we had come out with a work program, former rankings and the ratings, staff had taken upon themselves to anonymize the council member rankings, and I wasn't sure whether they were further, you know, kind of randomly scattered in terms of like, you know, if council member one was a consistent council member, for instance. But we did have a member of the public ask for the identities of the council members one through five, and so, you know, I was unaware of anybody who had asked, you know, for anonymization from council. And so I did respond back to the member of the public, and, you know, I CC'd our city manager, and it really did seem like this was not driven by anybody on council in terms of the identities. So, yeah, so Astrid, it looks like you have a new document there.
Yes, and yes, I do have this attachment here, and I can, I'm also planning on emailing this to the city clerks, so it can be posted as a written communication, so it can be viewable by the public.
Okay, sounds good. So basically, if I'm not mistaken, you've basically kept the columns all the same.
Yes.
One was me, number two was Vice Mayor Chow.
Yes.
And then everyone else is alphabetical or according to last name, right?
Correct, yeah, and if I scroll, you'll see the columns stay the same throughout.
So there wasn't like some kind of mysterious magic about this?
Oh, no, yeah. The attachment, the original Attachment A and this are completely identical, with the exception of the names. Nothing was moved, yeah.
All right, yeah, now take your presentation away. So is your presentation basically, you know, kind of the table that's there? I mean, because that's pretty...
Exactly, yeah. So this item was originally kind of just put on consent in order to show what the final ranking was of the 38 items, and so this is kind of what it is, is just the final ranking of the items that were adopted.
I see, I see. Okay, well, that's what was on our consent calendar, and this has been released public since last Thursday, so it's been out there for a week. We had it on consent, 14, as you indicated. It was pulled from consent calendar, and so Astrid, did you want to go over the items? I mean, you know, scrolling through, I think it'll probably take a few minutes, you know, just to read, you know, all the items through. So, I mean, if you're okay with it, I'll basically refer this to everyone's, you know, material that is accessible through the agenda, and then we'll take public comment and then bring it back to council for any follow-up questions or comments.
Sure.
But it doesn't look like there is a motion requested here or action.
Right.
Just receiving it.
Correct.
So...
So here, I wanted to keep it simple and make it easy to read, and so we have the project tasks and objectives here. I also included the old priority numbers, just to see the change throughout, so that could be viewed right here on the left side column. Most of the items tended to stay the same. There were some changes during the final prioritization, but all of these items were adopted in the final work program. So would you like me to just scroll?
I think that would be fine, yeah. If you don't want to, you know, kind of explique each one by title, that's fine. Just scroll, you know, maybe a couple, a few seconds per page.
I would also just note, I think we mentioned at the last meeting, but any items with the same rating were just tied, so the number just continues, because they have the same priority.
Yeah, I mean, you can scroll a little bit faster.
Great, yeah, and again, this will be posted as a written communication.
Yeah, I mean, it's posted, right? I mean, this is just... I mean, this is, just to kind of reiterate it, it's on the full agenda packet from Tuesday, the seventh. That's a one thousand five hundred and seventeen-page packet, and it starts on page four fifty-two, and it goes to page four sixty-three. So, yeah, so it looks like you're almost there. Okay, let's do this. Let's go to our members of the public with any comments, and then we'll take it back to council. So I'm not, actually, there is one. Josh Seelow has a hand raised, and so I'll remind our members of the public, you'll have three minutes to provide public comment. You also have the ability to pool your time. Each person within the pool can allocate two minutes. That gives up your individual time up to a total of ten minutes. And while the first person is speaking, please have your hand raised in order to be called on for this item. And then if you want to email your comments in to be read up to three minutes into the record by the city clerk, you can do so during the time the first person is speaking. And that would be to cityclerk@coopertino.org. So it is still just Josh with a hand raised, and so Josh, welcome. You'll have three minutes to speak.
Can you hear me, Mayor Paul?
Yes, yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Paul. It's good to be with you, Vice Mayor Chow, and council members Moore, Way, and Willie. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Homeless Jobs Program and to thank you for your continued support and prioritization of this program, hopefully into a second year. I wanted to share a testimonial from one of the clients who participated in the program this year, so you can hear about the impact that the program has had on her and her family's life. So she said that she, and she wrote this, so I'm reading her words. She got into the program. She returned to full employment. She's now received rapid rehousing, so she has a house. And she's been reunited with her children, which are now living with her in her home. They were not living with her before she participated in the program. And she says, "The program has helped me learn new life skills and how to be more responsible. I have a lot to learn when it comes to my finances. However, I signed up to take a financial workshop in July. I'm truly grateful to be housed and not having to worry where I'm going to sleep. I'm also grateful that I'm going to be working with Job Train and continue to work on developing my employment skills, building on my previous employment skills, so I can maintain my housing. If it wasn't for this program, I don't know where I would be. Thank you very much." And I just want you all to know, this is the kind of support that you make possible with this type of program. So I want to thank the investment that the City of Cupertino has made in the Homeless Jobs Program, and I'm hoping to see it continue into another year. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Josh. Much appreciated. And so we will go back to, actually, our city clerk at this point. Madam City Clerk, did anyone email you during that time allocated for public comment?
No, Mayor, I have received no emails.
Okay, and let's go ahead and bring it back to council. I see hands raised from council members Moore and Willie. So let's start with any clarifying questions. And before we go into commentary, I will ask for, actually, there's no motion requested, but we can go ahead and move to accept the report as well, if we want to put that on the table. But let's go for clarifying questions of the presentation at this point. Councilmember Moore.
Okay, well, I'll do this as a clarifying question. So I noticed we have CIP items on this ranking. And then we also, in tonight's agenda, we have another ranking, the CIP programs, which overlap the ranking that we have in this City Work Program item. So I'm wondering, what I noticed about the rankings that we have here is that number seven was the seismic retrofit and upgrade. So I just want to, and I'm not sure how to point this out, but in our, this, when we ranked CIPs, that one really fell to the very low on the list. So I just want to point that out. But do other cities, this is kind of a question for staff, do other cities combine their CIP items into their City Work Program? Because normally, what I'm seeing, if I go look at what Sunnyvale has for their budget, I'm seeing this like an operational budget, and then I'm seeing the CIP budget, and they're separate. And then I'm also wondering, what are the rules around when each has to be approved? So if I could hear some information about that, it'd be helpful.
Great. It looks like Jim is waiting, and we also have our Director of Public Works, Matt Morley. So Jim, why don't we start with you?
Okay, I didn't see that pop up there, but I was just gonna say, so this is my first city where we have what we're calling the City Work Plan. I've always been, it's either been the operational budget plus a CIP budget, and they're adopted at the same time, but not the same product, if that makes sense. You know, you have the budget, then you have the CIP. The CIP then becomes part, whatever is approved becomes part of the budget. In this case, with the City Work Plan Two, that could also be, in a sense, adopted by itself, just like the CIP could be adopted by itself. But eventually, whatever is adopted needs to be blended into the full budget, you know, at the end of the day. Matt, I don't know if you have, want to add anything?
Thank you very much, yeah. So my experience in my previous organization was that there tended to be a number of items that were CIP that ended up on the work program. And it really, it sort of adds emphasis to those items being important to the council. It just means a little bit of tracking into locations, I think. Moving them forward is still functional and something that we can do. So if it helps the council to be able to provide that emphasis, then it's something that I think that staff can accommodate, really a council decision.
Yeah, and that's a good way of ending it, frankly, Director Morley. So council decision, you know, even if we have a work program out there and it's adopted, and correct me if I'm wrong, if there are any particular items, like, we all agree that item number, I'm just gonna pick a random number from one through thirty-eight, that item number thirty-three, I don't know what it is, it just shouldn't be budgeted, then we don't budget it. I mean, that's within our purview. This is not some kind of, you know, etched-in-stone requirement, you know, this receipt of the work plan. Because it's actually a fairly, you know, at least from our current city manager's experience, I have no reason to think that it's not typically a novel thing that, you know, we go through in order to kind of reach out to our public and all the commissions and committees and try to figure out, you know, what are priorities for our city in terms of working on, you know, potential items that come from, you know, essentially the public over the course of the year. So we're not, I don't see in any way, shape, or form bound to these thirty-eight items, nor do I think, even if we were trying to, you know, represent that we were, that staff would get all thirty-eight items done or even addressed over the course of the fiscal year. So I think that this, you know, take it with a grain of salt. It is a good document. It is a well-formed document, but it is not something that absolutely binds us to how we proceed going forward. And without putting too fine a point on it, we have a budget that we're considering, you know, hopefully, you know, dealing with an approval of some kind later this evening. It is something, if something doesn't get funded, then obviously, it's not gonna proceed. So I would say, take the work plan process for what it has been. You can examine the rankings as they are, but not to get too lost in the weeds of how these rankings are presented. Without, you know, kind of putting any kind of qualitative, you know, kind of idea on it. As staff pointed out, you know, we agreed to a process. This is the ranking. We're not re-ranking at this point. This is just the receipt of a document. So again, you know, let this inform and notify how you're proceeding. But it's not something that, even if it's like, you know, within the top ten or top five, that we absolutely have to, you know, set forth as part of the budget, which is really where, you know, if you'll pardon the expression, where the rubber meets the road in terms of how things go forward in this next fiscal year. So, okay, so Councilmember Moore's hand is not raised anymore. So let me go to Councilmember Willie at this point, who does it hand raised.
Great, thank you, Mayor. First, number one, shout out to Josh, giving us some feedback, good, bad, or indifferent. That's what we want to find out. Hearing your awesome feedback, it, to me, it's just wonderful to hear. I would say that at the library expansion opening, Benayfer, who is part of the West Valley Community Services Assistance on this jobs program, said that actually Sunnyvale had reached out to her to find out how this program is being done. So here we are, possibly helping to put this word out and get other programs going, because we do see a huge need out there. Okay. I'll start with a question for the city manager. So there's thirty-five items. I really tried hard to keep it to thirty-five, so I actually didn't put any numbers on ones that I felt, you know, went beyond the city staff's ability. Are you comfortable with the thirty-five items, or do you feel staff is taxed, overtaxed? You know, how do you feel? No question there.
Thank you, you know, the mayor, through the mayor to councilmember Willie. You know, what we do in between is we, I get with the staff, all the department heads and everybody, discuss this. It is going to be a lot of work, but I do ask them to be realistic on what their accomplishments they think we can do throughout the year. So this is what we think we can get done. You know, there might be some hiccups along the way, but we think we can get through this.
Great. So now a positive comment for our Public Works Director, Matt, that he's coming from a place where items were put on the work plan for city council to be able to track. The history that I experienced here is that if it wasn't on the work plan item, then the previous city manager said, "No, staff has no time to give you updates." And yet, these are important items, this work plan, that we feel are answering the calls to our community. So that being said, that's how some of these got on there, you know, like the seismic upgrade. So if staff could jump to the seismic upgrade, I think Councilman Moore said it was number seven. If they could throw that up there so that we can read the description. So I'm glad that the description, I think, now reflects our intent. Where number seven, you're not quite there yet, the seismic upgrade for...
It's on page two.
For City Hall?
Up a little bit more.
There you go. And so it says seismic retrofit and upgrade to existing City Hall. Formally investigate alternatives to City Hall. So by putting it on the work plan, I, the intent was, I truly hope that we could help get from point A to point B, with B being the city council's desire. And quarterly updates, I think you will be asking for an update on this. And so to me, although it's primarily a CIP project, that's where the bulk of the money perhaps would come from, although I believe it's requested the five hundred K here, as long as it's not doubly funded. And so I'm happy with what we're seeing here. When we get to the CIP, I'll make some more comments about additional CIP items that I think belong connected with this, and that's the parking analysis at the City Hall City Community Center. And there's one other one. So I'll bring those up. But I'm happy with this. City manager thinks his staff is up to the task. Great. No further comments. Thank you.
Okay, folks, thanks very much. Thank you, Councilmember Willie. And you know what I would suggest at this time, since we have a couple hours left before midnight, that we move on to the CIP and the budget, because ultimately, at the end of the day, what we fund is what will be financially supported going forward for the upcoming fiscal year. So thank you for your comments, Councilmember Willie. Thank you for your presentation, Astrid, and to, you know, all of the staff that worked together to, you know, bring this forward. We don't have within our purview the ability to change this, and so we have a document. And let's go on to item number, I believe it was, someone held me out here. It wasn't thirty-nine, that was the last one. I think it was thirty-seven, is that right? Or was it thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight, Mayor.
I'm thirty-eight, okay. So that report having been received, I don't see further hands raised. Let's go on to item thirty-eight. And item thirty-eight, I'll go ahead and read the title of it. Although I won't read all the various items, because of course, this comprises the entirety of our budget with the recommended action. So the subject is a public hearing to consider the capital improvement program, or CIP, to consider supplemental information for the capital improvements program, and to consider the recommended budget for fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three, starting on July first, a little less than a month from now, adoption of the fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three, establishment, I should say, adoption of the budget for fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three, rather, establishment of the appropriation limit and related actions. And so let me refer this to our city manager. Jim, welcome to your very first combined CIP and budget item. Been great to have you this last almost half year here. And so why don't you kick us off on item thirty-eight here?
Thank you, Mayor and the council. Yes, first of all, it's great to bring it on home, as they say. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to our finance staff, who have done a great job making sure everything picks and ties and gets us to the point. So it looks like, I see Thomas up there, so Thomas, go ahead and kick that away.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Today, I'll be presenting the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, final budget adoption presentation. So today, we'll be discussing the changes since the proposed budget was printed on May first, as well as next steps. Department directors and their staff are available to answer any questions that you may have. So this slide shows all the components that are incorporated into the proposed budget. So over the past few months, the city council has held meetings and study sessions to review and provide direction to staff on the City Work Program, the Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, community funding, as well as the proposed budget. And so city council's direction from these meetings and study sessions are then incorporated into the budget that you're seeing today. So on this slide, we have a summary of the proposed budget, of changes to the proposed budget, since it was printed on May first. So the printed proposed budget on May first, recommended expenses of one hundred and twenty-five point five million. Since then, it's been increased by point eight million due to operating changes. Operating changes refer to items that were unknown when the proposed budget was printed. And then also, due to the timing of the City Work Program and Capital Improvement Program, they were also incorporated after the proposed budget was printed. So the City Work Program projects and transfers are increasing the budget by eight hundred thousand, and the City Capital Improvement Program and transfers are increasing the budget by three point five million, leading to a proposed budget as of June ninth of one hundred and thirty point six million. And on this slide, we can see these changes by fund type. And I'll just mention that the City Work Program total includes one hundred and seven thousand five hundred in transfers, and the Capital Improvement Program total as well includes transfers of twenty-three thousand six hundred. And on this slide, we have the revenues, expenditures, and fund balance by fund. General fund expenditures are ninety-five point two million, funded by revenues of ninety-four point seven million, and fund balance of five hundred thousand. Total expenditures for all funds are one hundred and thirty point six million, funded by revenues of one hundred and thirty point two million, and three hundred and sixty-one thousand in fund balance. Now I'll go into more detail on the changes. So this slide shows our operating changes. The Assistant City Manager and Legislative A positions were added by a city council motion at the proposed budget study session. The Legislative A classification doesn't currently exist in the city's classification plan, so it was costed at a management analyst level based on information received. The Economic Development Feud Fella was also removed by a city council motion at the proposed budget study session. And then below these, we also have... And then below these, we also have our community funding requests. So after the June seventh meeting, we added a community funding request that were recommended by the Parks and Recreation Commission. That recommendation was a total of ninety six thousand four hundred and sixty one. Based on the final funding amounts approved by City Council today, the new total will be sixty nine thousand four hundred and sixty one. And I'll just note that the amount for senior services part of the valley is six thousand one hundred and sixty one, so we rounded it to the nearest. We rounded it up by one dollar as our financial system doesn't allow cents. And we see at the bottom of this table here as well, after the June seventh meeting, we added revenues and expenditures for a grant. From the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services or Cal OES. Cupertino was awarded a one million dollar grant to help initiate the Business Conductivity Resilience Program. Which will provide resilience improvements and technical assistances, technical assistance to businesses and emergency planning. This funding will also help Cupertino enhance its Emergency Operations Center to support city and regional responses. On this slide, we also have a increase of three hundred thousand to a SB one, Senate Bill one gas tax revenue estimate. And so this is increasing to a line of projections from the state. A city council heard at the June seventh meeting from Public Works. The city expects to receive one point three million in SB one revenues. And the amount received by the city is tied to overall state gas consumption. And then the last change on this slide is a removal of fixed asset requests for vehicle and equipment replacement. So these were removed by a City Council motion at the proposed budget study session, and they will be brought to City Council at a future meeting. And so for operating changes, total expenses are eight hundred and seventeen thousand seven sixty eight, and total revenues are one point three million. And so the next two slides show proposed city work program projects. And so I'll just point out that the Lost and Middle School Bike Way and Vision Zero were already included in the printed proposed budget, so they're not budgeted again. And also the visitor center and youth group work projects are currently on hold until additional staff resources can be allocated. And on this second part of the city work program slides. I'll just note that the study session on city owned properties and the Blackberry Farm, Blackberry Farm Golf Course needs assessments are budgeted in the CIP budget. And so for the city work program, total expenses are eight hundred and forty four thousand, and total revenues are a hundred and seven thousand five hundred. And these revenues are transfers from the general fund to the other funds. And so now I'll hand it off to Matt Morley, Director of Public Works, to discuss the capital improvement program.
Thank you, Thomas. So I just wanted to spend a couple minutes talking about the capital improvement program, and I'm sure you'll want to spend a, a minute or two. Discussing the rankings and the projects uh, yourselves. Uh, this is the um, the list of projects that came forward in the proposed originally. Uh, and if we go to the next slide, you'll see that um, since that time, we've made some adjustments at council direction. This is what we think the council direction has been in terms of adjustments that uh, we'd like to make in the proposed, and this is uh, in, in the actual uh, CIP. And so this is what we're uh, thinking we're moving forward at this point pending further discussion tonight, or at a future night. Uh, and so you can see that with this one, we've redlined through some of the projects that we think the council is not supporting. Uh, based on motions that we've heard in, in previous meetings. Okay, that, next slide please. That concludes my portion of the report.
Thank you, Matt. So let's talk about what's coming up next in the budget cycle. So we plan to publish the adopted budget in July or August, and then we'll plan to present the first quarter report to City Council in November. The first quarter report will update the city council on year end results for the current fiscal year. As well as update council on first quarter results for the next fiscal year. And we look forward to your questions and comments. Thank you.
Great. Um, well, thank you very much. Uh, that was smart. Uh, thank you for listening to our, our past discussions as well and adopting them in the uh, current staff recommendations in this. Presentation. Um, before we go to council, I'm gonna go and uh, check in with our members of the public that are here. Um, so you'll have three minutes to speak on this item number thirty eight. And so I don't see any hands raised at this point. Um, but I do see one now. That is from Jean Bedord, and I'll let everyone know that. You'll have three minutes to speak, and again, you can consolidate your time, two minutes each up to ten minutes. Um, in, in this context, you can also, uh, once the hands are, uh, all called upon in Zoom. Uh, email our city clerk during the time the first person is speaking. Um, for uh, your comments to be read into the record for up to three minutes. So uh, at this point, it is still uh, one hand raised, and so Jean, welcome. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and council members. My name is Jean Bedord. I want to comment that this item is quite a voluminous document. It took quite a while to read through it. And I commend the staff for producing it. Finance is very short-staffed, and they've had little time to make extensive changes. Time is running out to get an operational budget. June thirtieth is only three weeks away, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done. At the May nineteenth meeting, council added two brand new positions at the very last minute. Which meant reworking the entire budget document for this meeting. Those new positions are, first of all, an Assistant City Manager for three hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars. To oversee legislative issues and advocacy, do outreach to communities, and to engage with affordable housing developers. And two, a Legislative Aid for a hundred and eighty three thousand dollars. Combined, these two positions will cost the city over five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I object to these new positions for several reasons. First of all, there's been no public vetting of these job descriptions. It seems that these two, yes, two positions are being added for the benefit of council, not residents. Secondly, do other cities of Cupertino's size have two dedicated positions to support legislative activities? I haven't seen any comparisons to other West Valley cities. Small cities are most effective when working through cities associations, not Lone Ranger tactics. Shouldn't Cupertino be working with Sunnyvale, Saratoga, and Los Gatos? These are council roles, not staff. Thirdly, there is already a Legislative Review Committee, which doesn't seem to be particularly effective in influencing state legislation. Staff, regardless of whether they are consultants or city staff, are not advocates for the city. Advocacy is the job of the city council. So why should the city spend over half a million dollars to hire staff to do council's jobs? These positions are a waste of taxpayer money. Please reconsider and remove from the budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jean, and I will bring it back to council at this point. Uh, so I'll go by questions clarifying for the staff presentation. Um, and others pertinent to the item, of course. And so I don't see hands raised, but I'm certain that there will be uh, questions and follow-ups. Councilmember Willie, your hand is raised. Why don't you start us off?
Yeah, so um, very good uh, presentation. Um, good assistance from uh, Director of Public Works, Matt. The uh, question that I've got kind of stems in the um, uh, uh, form of. Uh, Director of Public Works has struck out the four million dollars for the uh, City Hall. Correct. It previous description, uh, new City Hall, new, well. Uh, new three-story parking structure, eighty million dollars. Yeah, yeah, we, we talked about that. But in terms of the seismic upgrade, for which we just talked about the work plan. And the item is there with the funding amount of, say, five hundred thousand dollars. And when we previously talked about the uh, CIP, that was the number I tossed out to get us. The conceptual options that the city council. Would truly find, um, uh. Truly find uh, sufficient to consider. Not bringing ones that the city council isn't gonna consider. Let's not spend time on those. Um, unless it was truly, truly uh, required. So that is the main question, but I want to add to it. When I looked at the CIP item, there was both new projects and existing funded projects. And there were three of them. Community Hall Improvement Relocation slash Relocation of EOC, which was item number twenty three. City Hall Improvements and Programming Feasibility, item number thirty three. Civic Center Parking Analysis, item number thirty seven. I think all three of those need to be brought under the umbrella of the seismic upgrade for City Hall. And hopefully, my, my hope is that over the next six months. We will be able to define what the most likely options are that this city council would consider. And it, it should have that programming feasibility, the parking, you know, wrapped up in it. So um, that's where my question is for Director of Public Works. Thank you.
Hey, great. Thank you, Councilmember Willie. And so uh, Matt, I guess you're, you're back on tap here.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so yeah, I think we heard the council loud and clear that um, the uh, council would like a more deliberate process. Before we start out appropriating funds that would lead to a hundred percent design for a project. Uh, so our, our plan is, is to actually use those other funds that, uh, that you cited, Councilmember Willie. Uh, to, to advance this in uh, in close coordination and under direction of the council ultimately. Uh, so we think that there's some work and some discussion to happen, uh, and we, we'd like to move forward with that. Um, the council, council can help us along the way with direction on um, how we're doing and what the, what the designs uh, are, are fleshing out to look like. Uh, with the idea that it'll be conceptual, uh, and start with a, a good deal of planning from a capacity um, standpoint for parking, staffing, uh, and available space.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right, great. Thanks, Councilmember Willie. Thanks, uh, Director Morley. And uh, before I call on Vice Mayor Chow, let me uh, check in with our city attorney. So, so Chris, on this item, uh, you know, this is far and away, um, you know, in the longer term, just two or three years down the line. Um, the most expensive uh, project being contemplated. Um, you know, and, and so I, I was wondering to Director Morley's uh, point in terms of working with council along the way. Could we at this stage in our conversation, um, implement a council subcommittee? Uh, to be working with our staff, our city manager, the Director of Public Works. Um, and um, uh, you, you know, ha- having the meetings and talking about. Um, the, the plans for City Hall seismic retrofits, possibly doing some diligence on, you know, uh, past action. Um, i- is that something that would be legitimate in terms of uh, the consideration of the budget and, you know, moving forward from this?
So I, I, you know, so, so, so it is, so obviously it is part of the budget, but I, I think, you know, giving specific direction on how that. Project's going to be implemented is probably a little bit outside of the, the, the scope of, of what's been agendized here. I think, you know, a subcommittee may be useful and, you know, that may, but perhaps the next time that this comes, uh, this meeting, the uh. Um, the, the, this City Hall investigation comes back to council for an update. I think that would be an opportunity to, to, to act on, on that thought, Mayor Paul.
Okay, well, fair enough. Then in the interest of, you know, full disclosure and transparency. Uh, you know, what I had in mind here, when we did our groundbreaking, um, in conjunction with the, the Historical Society on. Uh, the Canyon Crossing, um, you know, uh, project. Um, one of the uh, former owners of the, of the property was the, um, was the manager of the nineteen eighty six. Uh, upgrades to City Hall, and uh, he was willing to come in and talk to, uh, talk to our city manager as well as myself. Uh, about some of his perspectives on, on this project. And um, you know, subsequent to that, we had, you know, some of our public discussions. It seemed to me that there were um, at least a couple of people on, on our council that had, you know, a very strong interest in, in, in keeping with this. Given the fact that I term out in, in six months, a little bit less at this point. Um, I, I thought it would be good to kind of, you know, perhaps create a, a subcommittee, you know, with the beginning of this uh, conversation. Uh, which I think will happen in a couple of weeks. I, I need to check my calendar, but. Um, at this point, I, I, I think I'll probably take that meeting with um, you know, with Jim, and hopefully, Matt, you, you'll be available. I know you don't have notice as to when that was, uh, and, and so we'll coordinate. Um, and then, you know, subsequent to this, when we have this appropriately agendized, uh, let's go ahead and form that subcommittee and um, you know, hopefully we can. Keep a good longer-term conversation going here. So um, uh, Matt, uh, Director Morley, you have your hand raised. Did you want to make a, a comment on that?
Yeah, ju- just filling in a bit of information. Thank you, Mayor. Um, on the seventeenth during our um, city work program discussion. Uh, Vice Mayor, uh, Chow did um, motions um, to, to form a subcommittee, and that motion passed. Uh, so we, we fully expect that that will be the continued direction from the council. Um, so we're, we're good with that. I think that we don't have the details on what that looks like. Uh, in terms of who's on the subcommittee, but we can certainly bring an item to council for that discussion.
Thank you so much for, well, in, in the first instance, listening. That, that, that's refreshing. Uh, thank you. That's much appreciated. And I, I, I actually remember at the end of that meeting. Um, a- a- and honestly, you know, a- a- as much of a pleasure as it is to do all this and uh, you know. Uh, everything else that co- comes with it. Usually at midnights on the first and third Tuesdays, my, my brain is completely fried, but. What I remember is thinking, we didn't populate that subcommittee. Um, but I'm gonna go with what, um, you know, our city attorney was pointing out that, you know, let's, let's properly agendize this and. Um, I, I, I think we can go forward with um, you know, that plan as, as described. Um, and then, yeah, get that, that, that subcommittee, um, you know, populated, so to speak. So uh, thanks for pointing that out, and Vice Mayor Chow, you have the floor next.
So first I want to clarify something. So I'm sharing the screen, which was the motion I made on the seventeenth of May, I think. And uh, the, there, there was the first small motion, which. Included the removing some items, and then we decided that we are going to rank them. So I crossed some items out, and then we added the ranking, but this item still remained, which included. Revising some language, but I don't see that reflected. I remember. Um, so for BlackBerry Splash Pad. Rather than limiting to BlackBerry, we were revising it to mean identified locations for Splash Pla- Pad. On that's geographically dispersed as specified in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And then the Deansah Buffer Bike Lanes is changed to just bike lanes. The reason is that we would like to see options, not just buffer, because that's a busy street. Um, so in, so rather than the original language of including a patented buffer zone. Uh, this is changed to provide buffers between existing bike lane and the vehicle list. Which could be patented buffer zone or other more visible options. So I think we would like to have options that the community and the council can consider. Are these reflected in the CIP narratives right now?
Through the mayor, uh, that, with respect to Black, um, BlackBerry Farms, I think. Um, what we were hearing from the council was that that wasn't a desirable location, so that's why we struck it. But we did, um, we did see that there was um, a potential for wanting to, to continue that discussion. So that's why we're presenting it as a red, sort of a red line strike through on our doc, on our um, document in the presentation, so that you, you know. Um, clearly what the, what we're, what we're thinking or what we thought we heard. Uh, so uh, if, if you're looking for other locations, certainly as, as those projects develop, we would inco- incorporate the potential for splash pads in those as the. Scope develops. Um, it would not be a CIP on its own to look for locations. The, the, that would be more of a, sort of a work plan i- item to look for, for splash pad locations, but probably. Um, given the, the park work that we're, that we're programmed to do at Memorial Park and. Uh, at Lawrence Mitty, a, a good opportunity to, to incor- incorporate um, that concept, at least in the discussions at the front end of those projects. With respect to the, to Deansah Boulevard Buffer Bike Lanes, uh, yeah, we, we realize that you'd like to. yeah, we, we realize that you'd like to have a discussion about the scope of that project. Once we get the, the scope underway and beginning, we'll bring that to the council for your consideration, and we'll talk through options on that one.
I think perhaps you misunderstand the intention, what this motion means. Like for work program, when we discuss the work program, council proposed revised the language. And then the, the, the program that comes back for the next meeting should have that revised language, rather than saying that, oh, we will do it in the future discussion. I think that's not what the, the intent of this motion. So it should have been revised into this agenda packet. And then this should have been what we ranked on. Is the ranking should be based on the revised language. So can we revise them so that this is captured?
Okay, Vice Mayor Chow, I'm going to go ahead and bring this to our city manager, who has his hand raised. Jim, what's your input on this?
Oh, just real quick. Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to state on the, on the BlackBerry Farms Splash Pad, you know, what, what Matt was saying is change, if we change the words, this no longer is a CIP item, because a CIP by definition has to be a project that is going to be built or constructed. And this would go more onto a work plan or another item, but it would not be by definition a CIP item anymore, because it's not defined.
I believe we do have Satellite Garden, for example. That was a program that did not have identified sites. And part of the program is to identify sites, and that's a CIP project.
Well, before my time, and that, that would not have been something I would recommend, because you want to adopt a program that has a site, a dollar amount, a project. That's what I would have been doing.
We also have annual grant, like for park, two hundred thousand for park amenities, and that's not identified, not location and not specific amenity.
Right. In that, in that case, you have a, you do have a dollar amount assigned to a project that would be coming in. I think this one falls definitely more in line with, this is a discussion type of item that the staff can go out and review, just as our directors said, looking at the different parts.
That's fine. Okay, that's fine. And then another thing I want to share is the, wait, let me find this. Okay. So I want to put this on the record, which I sent to the city manager already regarding the roles and responsibility and the why we need this assistant city manager. And this is the email I sent to the city manager. And this is a gen- in general terms. But in terms of impact, if we had such a person, it's to fill in a lot of gaps that we are not doing. And I'm finding out, it's not that they are, this person will be doing city council work. It's that I'm doing a lot of planner work and a lot of city staff work out of my time, because a lot of, there are gaps that are not filled. For example, the CEP Housing Element Committee. Right now, we still don't have a plan after four meetings. If we have an executive staff that's in charge of this plan, and then I find out that it's even, even in the contract of EFC to provide a draft community engagement plan, which still doesn't exist. And there's, and then I find out I have to be the one reaching out to, somehow say planner to find out how they are reaching out to the different focus groups, and they realize their contract with the county. I shouldn't be the person that's doing this work. A city staff at a higher level should be reaching out to other city. I reach out to somehow say collaborative to try and find out is how a kid in a box works and find out, oh, they kid in a box is a valid way to do outreach by volunteers. I find out pop-up booth is another way. This, I shouldn't be the person making a call and finding this out. Now I'm passing all the information to the city planning department, but I don't know if they have the staffing to follow up on that. So that's the thing. We have the gap that's not filled. And I am doing the city staff work. I'm not paid, and I really don't have that time. But these are things that's urgent. I find out I have to do it, otherwise we are not making progress. And we have not made progress. We have not gotten any update on the partnership with Habitat for, Habitat for Humanity, which Mayor Sharp, former Mayor Sharp back in two thousand and nineteen wants to do, and Bay Area Housing Authority for special needs housing. And I have to be the person who called them to find out the status update. And then I find out they already visited the site, and then I learned about all these things that I shouldn't be spending time figuring out. And we still have no positive relationship with news media, which I think if we have someone on staff on who is aware of that, that would be better. And just, just there are a lot of gaps. For example, this, this, just this week, I realized that we have not reached out a very essential, important component of housing element, employee associations of De Anza, Cooper Hino Union, Fremont Union. And then I am the person that fight, I, I called their board members so that they can connect me. And then I'm hoping that I will then help. I'm doing this so to save the city staff time. I know they don't have time to make these contacts. And then I'm finding out, for example, there are properties that the property.
Mayor, I'm sorry. May, 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 may I have to blurt for a minute, Mayor?
Oh, thank you, Vice Mayor and legal counsel. So Chris has asked for, so let's yield the floor to Chris.
Yeah, I said, so, 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 so the housing element is, is not on, on the agenda. Certainly, a general reference to, to, to housing element is something, is something to justify the appointment of an additional assistant city manager is appropriate. But at some point, we're getting to a level of, of policy discussion of the housing element that, that's not agendized. So I did request that, 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 the Vice Mayor tailor her comments accordingly.
Yeah, so this person could be, for example, making phone calls to property owners who did not respond to housing element. And I understand the staff does not have time to do that. They send an email, and then they couldn't follow up. And then I find out I will try to see if I can find who is a property owner. Can I follow up? And we need a staff person to do that. So, yeah.
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor.
We need that two months ago.
Okay. Uh, let, let, let me ask a, a question of staff. So we are working with the recommended action of the agenda from Tuesday. Is that correct? And, and that hasn't been modified in accordance to what, I think it was Director Morley's presentation with regard to the strikeouts. Thomas, your, your hand is raised. Did you want to speak to that question with regard to what, you know, the so-called default action that I've described it as would end up being?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. So the mo- the recommended action was modified in the written communications that was provided to council today. And so in the staff report there, that is the most recent recommended action, which includes addition of the community funding, as well as some of the other changes that we discussed, operating budget changes that we discussed today, as well as, as well as the CIP changes.
What page of the written communications is that, Thomas?
So let me just hold that up.
Yeah, I have the document open here, so I'm not seeing where that, that modification was made. So I, I'm looking at the, the notice for this meeting. It also has the same language as the notice for Tuesday evening.
So the staff report is on page thirty-three and thirty-four and thirty-five.
Thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five. Okay. So, so you're saying that that's inside of the staff report? I mean, I guess my question is, is there anything? Okay, so that's recommended action on page thirty-three. And then where would the appropriations for the CIPs have been initially? So it looks like at the bottom of page thirty-four, the capital improvement program. So it starts with the LED lighting now. So it's bottom of the page two of the staff report. And then I guess the, let me take a quick look here. Capital Improvement Program originally started out with the, the splash pads, and then it went to the library. Okay, so, so now it's been eliminated from written communications. Those two items, the splash pad. Okay, so I see. So, so just to refer everyone, I'll go ahead and, maybe I need to log into my other computer here so I can share the screen. So, so Thomas, do you have that, that document available to share with people?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, go ahead and share that so that we know we have a common basis. So go up to the, the, the prior page, please. So this is under written communications, the recommended action here. You've got the subject for, you know, this item number thirty-eight. And then Thomas, the next page, please. And so that's the second page of the recommended action. And so as we said, it's a, it's a fairly long motion. And then in the third page of the staff report before it says question, that is the remainder of the recommended action as, as it now stands. So just as, by way of notice in the public, really, the default motion is not going to be what you see in your notice of this meeting or in the notice for, or in the agenda for Tuesday night. It'll be this part of the staff report. Okay, so thank you very much, Thomas. Appreciate that. Then let me call on Councilmember Willie, who has a hand raised next.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah. We had a resident that raised a particular concern. And we're here to listen to the residents and to engage with them, provide them information, tell them where they can get help, whatever it is. A resident made a clear concern about the particular position that has been added. And I think the Vice Mayor did a very appropriate response to that resident. What I would ask of the city attorney is that if we're not able to respond to a resident's concern on an agenda item for the agenda item, then can we do a better job of noticing that will say something along the lines of listening to and responding to residents' concerns to the best of our ability with short notice? So I'll leave it at that. But to me, we're here to engage with the residents. And when, when a resident has a concern to bring up, we shouldn't just be saying, oh, sometime in the future. You know, there's no time like the present. If not now, when? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Willie. And Chris, I noticed that your mic- microphone is on. Did you want to speak to Councilmember Willie's comment?
You know, briefly, because I, I know we have a, a lot to do still. Uh, just that certainly there was, you know, a lot of space for the Vice Mayor to respond to the residents' comments within the scope of what was noticed. And, and certainly, I, I, I'm generally quite liberal with allowing people to, to use that space. But, but, you know, part of my job is to enforce the Brown Act, or attempt to enforce the Brown Act and some other legal requirements.
Yeah, you know, frankly, I thought you, you both did a good job. And Vice Mayor made her points, and, you know, you just urged caution. And, you know, she stayed within those contours a little bit longer. And so, yeah, I mean, thank you for the comment as well, Councilmember Willie. It's important to be able to respond to, you know, public concerns. And so I, I do see Councilmember Way now has a hand raised. Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is raised again. So let's go to Councilmember Way. And then a- a- after we get Councilmember Way's comments, I will ask that somebody move the recommended action as articulated in the staff report for this item tonight and see if we can get a motion in a second for that. Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I will be brief, because I did voted no originally on Tuesday on the proposed two positions. Because that not, I stated, it's not because I don't think we could use two positions. I do think the job description needs a little bit further refined before we start to add a position. And I did see Vice Mayor Chow's more elaborate description on it. So this is my question for maybe the council or the staff is, we can, I can, I can approve the positions. And I do believe the job description needs to be more refined. And, you know, my, one, one of my area, I think, that's important to the council, into the city, is maybe one of these people, new jobs, could explore grant positions, a grant that could, a federal grant, state grant. So you could supplement our CIP projects, our, our different projects of grant approvals. Writing is very important. So my question is, if we approve this budget with the new positions, can we refine the positions further before we start to go out and recruit new staff?
I don't see why we wouldn't be able to do that, but let me refer this question to our city manager. And, and I will also point out that we did have a, a contract that's been increased for grant writer. When I was at the US Mayor's Conference, I did speak to a number of people located in DC, talking about the various, you know, funding sources that are out there right now on, on a grant basis. And I think that we would more than, you know, get our return for a dollar right now if we had, you know, a good cohesive and systematic way of identifying grants and going after them. So, I mean, I think that makes a lot of sense to, you know, carve out the grant space. So, Jim, your hand's not raised. By see Director Faro's hand is. Christina, did you want to speak to the comments made by Councilmember Way?
Um, yes, I just wanted to point out that, yes, you could refine the job description. Approving the position this evening simply allocates the actual position along with the funding to go with it.
Okay, well, thanks. And Jim, did you want to follow up on anything, you know, beyond what?
Oh, thank you. No, I, excuse me, that's exactly what I was going to say is, once, if it is approved, then we would come back with the full-blown description of it to make sure it fits what council was thinking.
Yeah. And, and, you know, before I go back to, you know, the, the, the request for the motion, you know, one thing I will say is that, you know, I, I, I'm completely open about my service on council. And I, you know, I've actually welcomed the, the PRAs that have come out more recently about, you know, all of this. It was something extremely extensive, like all emails that, that I send out for the first three months of the year. You, you know, in fact, I, I actually wish we could disclose everything, because, you know, the stuff that was disclosed to the public speaker who spoke, because she was the person who issued the PRA, was, was not everything that was, well, was, was, was in the purview of what I wrote, because a lot of that is actually privileged. A lot of that's confidential. But I think it could be fair to say that within the scope of that material, it is just so obvious that, that people in council are, are doing so much. And so, you know, I appreciate the comment that council should do its job. I'm going to harken back to a comment that I've made previously, that I often feel like I'm doing five jobs in City Hall. And so I think that it is reasonable to look at some positions that could help support the, the council efforts. But when we're talking about things like, let's get the housing element figured out, let's go ahead and, you know, get various of these, you know, implementation measures, reach out to the community, help with the development side of things, you know, such as, you know, having a groundbreaking. I did coordinate, you know, a, a, a large part of the first groundbreaking that we had earlier this year, just for instance. And, you know, just not, not feeling so well these last couple of days, I've had to offload a little bit of logistics. And I thank our city manager for helping to organize the Angel Island trip, you know, logistics beforehand, which also the, you know, speaker from the public is, is attending as well. So, so I, I don't think there's an ignorance with regard to realizing that a lot is happening in our city, and we're doing quite a bit. So, you, you know, I, I do take it all with a grain of salt. But at the same time, you know, I say very sincerely that we're doing a lot and, you know, some, some assistance is needed on top of what we have from our, you know, candidly, very, very excellent staff. But I know that we're a group of people that do, you know, as our community does, expect more and hold ourselves to. Uh, expect more and hold ourselves to a higher standard and and are always trying to improve, which is, you know, precisely why we are the community that we are. So at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and ask for uh, that default motion, and again, that will tie to our staff report for this item.
And so, um. Pardon, Mayor Paul, I actually haven't spoken on this item.
Um, so Councilmember Moore, why don't you make your comments uh, and and questions at this point, I I thought you had spoken, but I I guess we've had four uh, items, so I forgive me, I I wasn't tracking mentally, uh. And 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 I guess a hundred percent cohesively, the fact that that you hadn't spoken yet, so so please, uh, please, please feel free and then I'll ask for that motion after after your comments and questions.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul, so within the uh, the written communications, we did also receive uh, the special projects update uh, from fiscal year twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two. And in this update, there are special projects which were not completed and this is a it's pretty small font, but it goes on for a a good two and a half pages. Um, and this is within within that particular budget and then within our current budget, we have another uh, page and a half, about seven million dollars worth of special projects also. And then going back uh, in in time, we have a a multitude of special projects and so we really don't have um, a, an up-to-date uh, accounting for this number of projects, for instance. Uh, fiscal year twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, special projects included the BMR Affordable Housing Fund for Habitat for Humanity, and that was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, I, we don't know what what happened to that, was what happened with Habitat for Humanity? Because there was a mention from the vice mayor about Habitat for Humanity. We also had funding for housing strategies and homelessness um, allocated. Uh, I, perhaps the Quinlan Community Center reception remodel for forty thousand dollars happened, um, I don't know. We had uh, going back in time to fiscal year twenty eighteen, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for um, an economic strategic plan um, im- implementation and um, a city's facilities building assessment for two hundred thousand dollars. And that seems to be something that that we're kind of looking at right now, um, for, uh, it was about ninety thousand to look at, um, Bern, Bletch and Stocklemeier, if I recall correctly. So so personally, I would want to have an uh, uh, i- an update from the departments about these uh, lingering special projects that um, have had appropriated funds um, allocated to them. Now, with regards to the um.
Um, let me just ask you a clarifying question on that, Councilmember Moore, uh, great points, um, great point with regard to you know, what's what's uh, hanging out there, how far back would you like staff to go uh, in your inquiry?
Honestly, I would go back to, I was trying to figure out where, when having special projects started. Um, I, it was sometime after two thousand five and and I think around twenty fourteen, fifteen, I'm not really I'm not really sure, I only have so many hours in the day to go digging into this stuff and hunt down that, it's and and it's not really my job. Um, so, but I could, I could identify projects, we're still hanging out there, so somebody needs to go track them down and find out, um, find out what what happened.
Okay, so 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 before you you proceed and, you know, of course, you still have a floor, but but let me just um, kind of clarify this, I I think this is probably um, informational and perhaps study session oriented between uh, finance as well as uh, public works. Uh, but I think great point, I mean, y- you know, if there is actually a mechanism out there to kind of track this, uh, let's let the public know. And um, if there's not, then obviously that's an administrative function that we need to clean up. Uh, but but thank you for for, you know, pointing that out, oh, I see uh, Jim's hand is raised at this point, Jim, did you want to speak to this, uh, perhaps you?
Yes, I, um, Councilmember Moore, I briefly talked about it, I think it's today, lost track. Um, but I also mentioned it to um, Public Works Director. I don't know if I mentioned it to our um, administrative services, but it's, it is something we could work on as a study session. Um, some of those go well back before any of us were even here. Um, so it'll take a little bit of time and digging through records and files to try and find that, but it is something um, that we can look into, Matt, I don't know if you have a problem on your.
Yeah, thank you, I was right on board with that, I think that there's some reporting that we can do and probably fold into existing reporting uh, processes that are undertaken maybe with quarterly report or something along that line, but we can talk about it at the staff level and figure that out. Um, these, there are a lot of these projects that are in progress, so to the extent that the council can um uh, it, move, move uh, along the funding for them, that would be important in order to keep them going, I'll give you a great example, is our pavement maintenance program, it's in a special project funds. Uh, and I know that the city takes great pride in the pavement condition and we have projects that are underway and designed and ready to bid, so. Uh, and and that goes for many of the projects, so there there is active work that is occurring on these, uh, I understand the new request to uh, to get an update on them. Um, but important for the, for the sake of the work that we're able to continue the progress on them, um, there's significant ramifications if we don't, but. Um, want, just wanna to be clear on on that and certainly um, providing reporting is is a a very viable direction for us to take.
Right, exactly, I mean, it sounds administrative.
Mayor Paul?
So, um, oh, am I muted, I'm sorry, did I uh?
You're not muted.
Not muted, okay, well, thank you, Councilmember Moore, let 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 me.
I I'm not finished on this um, item, so with regards to.
So let me, let me just, you know, kind of yield the floor back to you in a, just in a moment, I I I do note that um. Uh, now we have Vice Mayor Chow, Councilmember Willie and Councilmember Way with hands raised. And so, Councilmember Moore, after you uh, conclude your questions and and comments. Um, I I will ask for that motion, but I I think this is an important point that you're making initially. Uh, to, you know, just just reiterate that if we're not able to track these funding allocations over time, you're absolutely correct. It is not your job to go back seventeen years in time. And if anyone insinuates that this somehow falls within the purview of council's jobs and um. You know, therefore says that we're not entitled to ask for support, I think they're just absolutely wrong. Um, so so thank you very much for pointing that out, um, and we do need to be able to have a, you know, very systematic and accurate way of tracking how these allocations are um, are 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 proceeding over time. So thanks very much, uh, Councilmember Moore, I'll I'll yield the floor back to you at this point.
Thank you, Mayor Paul, so uh, uh, along that line about having the the pavement and uh, sidewalk curb and gutter in uh, as special projects, it also sits inside of um, pu- the public works funding as well. You've got four point six million for street pavement maintenance and about two million for sidewalk curb and gutter, I've tried to understand why it was split into both places, I can't. So hopefully, that'll, that answer will come back. Um, and to throw more, more um, confusion into the works, we have the the development impact fee reports going back to two thousand five. Within, if you go to the Cupertino budget page and scroll down, um, within these um, uh, fee reports for various projects, um, they had what looks like kind of conditions, uh, but they allocated funds uh, to to certain um, projects and I went, started reading through several of these and it and um, some of them have not um, come to pass. And so somebody, someone needs to start digging into these and find out what funding was already allocated, for instance. I, which I thought was kind of a little bit unusual, for Main Street Cupertino, there was um, a funding allocated out of that project to do some like traffic calming uh, near City Hall, um, uh, which I thought was kind of odd, so like Rodriguez and Pacifica when um, the the requirement was that they would do some um, traffic mitigations around the the neighborhoods of of the project. And then I I don't really consider that near it, but that's an interesting uh, project that needs to be tracked to see if the money from that um, that development actually, did it actually go to that project, so there's, I I'm, you know, I hate to bring it up, but there's a world more of of um of like accounting issues to to be followed, um, to see, just to be sure if uh, what what was promised when these um, developments were approved has actually um, come to pass. Now, for the um, the two positions, the Assistant Manager and Legislative Aid. Um, well, let me go to the two that I'm really happy to see about in particular, one is the Budget Manager because that's somebody who could really help with all of these questions that I'm asking and uh, go, they they would get to dig into all of that and I, so I'm really glad to see that. And the the Purchasing Manager, I am very, very pleased to see that position added as well. Um, having spoken to uh, the the consultant from Moss Adams. I personally am uncomfortable suggesting hires, I would want somebody who had all of that experience looking at cities to make that suggestion before we are um, uh, trying to hire in, uh, it seems like we're up to about five hundred thousand dollars worth of new employees and uh, trying to suggest that, so I can, I don't personally like the idea of m- micro-managing our city manager for who to hire where and then to come up with a job description, I this, I'm just not gonna do it, there's experts in that field, I'm not it. Um, now, it, with regards to the City Work Program, I personally would have taken that City Work Program, I think it's too too long, I like that the the manager bravely uh, said that you feel you could go through it, but with all of these numbers of of uh, still hanging around special projects and these other um, developer uh, impact fee projects uh, that need to be tracked and see where, I think you've got a lot more work that's already, already still out there. So I personally would have cut off the list at around, I marked it at twenty-six, I would have taken twenty-six and stop on the, on the um, ci- city uh, work plan, so um, uh, I I'm un- uncomfortable with the two hires. Uh, because it's a long time commitment and I think the City Work Program is is too too long. Um, and and so I, and I would like to hear about the special projects because it could be that you really have gotten through most of them and it's not as bad as I think, but I'm I'm very concerned that there's a lot more work that still needs to be done, thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Councilmember Moore, and um, I I I will ask you right now, so we have an appropriations list. Um, and so, you know, uh, Thomas, perhaps you can bring up that list again, um, from the City Council's staff report uh, for this meeting, so it's it's on page two, page thirty-four of the um, written communications packet. And so, uh, to the point about appropriations for the City Work Program um, being limited to a certain number, and if you could do a one-pager, that would be appreciated, just put it uh, to the width of, uh, thank you. Uh, so, item H, uh, so just scroll down until you get to the second page. Um, item H, huh, that's interesting, maybe we're not looking at the same document for some reason.
On the one, Mayor?
Uh, yes.
Uh, revised version, because during the meeting, I made updates based on that community funding recommendation, so originally it was ninety-six thousand four hundred and sixty-one, and so I changed that to.
Oh, great, well, thanks.
Four sixty-one to cross out these two projects and uh, and then, awesome.
Okay, got it, guys, so that 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 explains the page flow, okay, so great, so um, up at um, and maybe if you could uh, do the view as like web view or something like that, so it's all one document. Uh, uh, under view on the tab there, yeah, I think there's like.
So which view did you want?
It used web layout view, the third button from the left on the.
Okay.
Yeah, great, um, and then, um. Yeah, that should be enough space to take a look at everything out there, um, yeah, you can kind of zoom in on that one, um. So, so, so to uh, Councilmember Moore, I would ask, so uh, the allocations to the work plan as contemplated right now are in Romanets, one through sixteen here, under H, so um, are are there particular ones that you're looking to remove, because this is the the budgetary discussion, right, so? Um, or, you know, i- is it, you know, just kind of a general comment with regard to the work plan?
Uh, this, Mayor Paul, this is a little confusing because we had um, the final priority ranking for adopted fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty-three City Work Program. And maybe I don't have the right form, but it goes on to to thirty-eight items, I believe, is the total, I mean, it's, it goes on for pages and that's, that's definitely, like I'm saying, cut it off at twenty-six and you've only got sixteen here.
There's only sixteen items enumerated here for budgetary allocations, and so if anyone. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm I'm wondering how this happened because like our item one says, um, consider options for developing ELI and BMR housing.
Yeah, so so let me just, yeah, let 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 me let let me bring this to staff, I mean, I believe what's happening here is that this is not tracking with the enumeration of of the work plan, this is just a matter of um, identifying areas where 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 budgeting would be requested here based upon that work plan. But uh, let's start with our city manager, Jim, you have your hand raised, uh, did you want to speak to this part of the?
Yes, yeah, thank you, Mayor, and this is, these are the items in the work plan that needed budgetary appropriation, some of those, you know, need appropriation or more of a, of a true work plan, you know, looked into how to create you know, the the homeless, how do we help that, it's, it's not really a dollar amount attached to every single one, so these are the ones that had a dollar amount attached, so we need to request the, you know, council to approve appropriation for.
Well, thank you, uh, Jim, and just to let you know, Jim, I I think your mic might be a little wonky, it it might, uh, you know.
I, I'm having problems today with my computer, it started early, so I apologize for that.
That's okay, no, it's it's, there's like a little bit of like background echo or something like that, but um, yeah, I I'll let you know if it gets.
I'm gonna go offline real quick and try and change it.
Okay, cool, um, and uh, Thomas, you have your hand raised, did you want to elaborate any further or was there just um, a hand raised from before?
That was from before, sorry about that.
Okay, no worries, all right, um, so, yeah, that was my follow-up uh, question to you, Councilmember Moore, I I mean yeah, from a, from the perspective of a budget, that's what they're looking at from the allocation, and so um. Uh, your hand is raised again, or did you want to?
I'd like, yeah, I'd like to comment on that, so uh, for for me, I would have cut it, when I say I would have cut it off at twenty-six for the number of items, um, it's kind of interesting because most all of the items with a, with that, with a cash value fell below um, twenty-six with a, with a sum total vote of of uh like, the next item had one person give a five, one person give a one and three zeros. So that to me isn't even a pass, um, but that uh, that's the first item, analyze potential revenue measures for fifty thousand dollars. It only had two, one, one person strongly for it, one weak, very weakly for it and three against, in my, to me, it's zero is against, so. Um, to that, it, uh, when I look at something like that, it doesn't, it doesn't seem to rise to the the level of of wanting to to fund that, um, and and that's, and and then it continues on this way, because uh, you, we have sixes, sixes, fives um, and 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 lower, so um, I personally, I I realize that it's it's late and people don't want to uh, perhaps dig into these items, but I I I won't vote for it, I'd rather go through and knock things off if if people are willing to do that, um. Yeah, anyway, leave it at that.
Well, I mean, I I'd be open to, you know, entertaining that if people are prepared to do so, I mean, I I will point out that the Homeless Jobs Program um, number eight uh, is is very highly ranked and uh, the Cupertino store is actually, you know, I I know it's in the top fifteen. And I think that's the second highest allocation here, so I I mean numerically, it's probably, probably not the majority that's um, you know, uh, not, not ranked highly. But um, yeah, I mean, I I I see a number of things, I, one one thing we could potentially say is that if it's not in the top twenty, just, you know, don't allocate the funding for the, for this point. I mean, I'd be happy to, you know, entertain a motion to that effect, but, um. Okay, well, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and ask for uh, that uh, default motion, maybe we can, you know, kind of carve uh, out space from there. Um, would anyone be willing to put forward that, and again, this is the uh, the staff report item um, in the, in in the uh, in the description of the the funding allocation, this isn't, um.
So, I I I move the staff recommendation.
Okay, based upon the current staff report and.
I'll revise the one shown on screen.
Okay, thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chow, and Councilmember Willie, uh, are you willing to second that motion?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, thanks very much, Councilmember Willie. All right, so um, we're back to uh, the uh, council at this time, we have a motion in a second, I've got. I've got Vice Mayor Chow, Councilmember Willie, Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Wei, and then I'll make some comments as well. Oh, before we start off, I I I do want to put in my own kind of plug there. I I I was just notified recently that the volunteer fair estimated at about eighty five hundred dollars would kind of is 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 in search of funding. So I I would request that we, you know, kind of, you know, add that somewhere within the budget. So so that's that's my ask here. Councilmember Chow.
So a comment and a request and a question. So I think it's a good idea that we should have someone who can help us locate grant funding opportunities. But I don't think we need a dedicated position for that. And if we had assistant the city manager after we gone through the housing element, when there is capacity, I think this person the city manager could likely decide how best that what that person could do. And it doesn't have to be spelled out entirely in the job description. And I think the manager, Jim, Jim definitely knows how to write this job description, and we don't have to really tell him. But the main thing is we need someone with planning in experience immediately because there is a lot of gap that should have been done since even back in January. And so I would like some commitment from Jim that so that we can have a more clear timeline, that a commitment to move on this quickly because housing element element really need help. And the current staffing is not able to take on this. And I have waited, I have waited. And I reached out to all these people because Mayor Darcy Paul told me, if you want something done, do it yourself. So that's when I started to do this. And then, yeah, I find out I'm doing the city manager job. So I wish we can have someone to really step up and so can we have that commitment to move on this quickly?
Good, Mayor, Vice Mayor, yes, no. H R has already started to look into it, assuming that it does get approved. So it's so they're already looking into all of that.
Great, thank you for that. And then the one question is, I did not see historical society line item mentioned, so is that line item still there? My understanding from last year is, I think we want to support them. But then this is now turning out into like the Chamber of Commerce situation. We have twenty thousand, no agreement on exactly what that twenty thousand support. I was hoping there will be a some kind of memorandum of understanding or projects identified. So I'm yeah, a little unsure. Yeah, thank you. So
Through the mayor, if I may.
Uh, yes, please welcome Joanne, Director McGreevy.
Sorry about that. Um, yeah, I wanted to let everybody know that the update for the subcommittee on the Historical Society is scheduled to come at the June twenty first meeting for your consideration.
Okay, great. So, yeah, so we've got the the motion on the table.
But I am I am on that subcommittee. To date, we have not had any conversation with Cupertino Historical Society any form of memorandum of understanding.
So we have done the information gathering that will be presented to you on June twenty first for council discussion about that.
Oh, okay, so do we approve this today?
This, the the amount is not included for
Right now, it's not included.
Right.
Okay, that's good to know, and and I don't need to be concerned about that. Great. Thank you. That's all.
Great, thanks, Vice Mayor Chow. And so Madam Secretary Clerk, can you remind me who made the motion and who seconded this?
The motion was Vice Mayor Chow moved and Councilmember Willie seconded.
Councilmember Willie seconded. Well, let me ask, since we're in the transition between Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Willie, would you be willing to add the eighty five hundred dollars in the budget for the volunteer fair?
I have a question. So that does that include fee waiver and the city staff time? Because that or sometimes get counted as charged service.
That's right.
Eighty five thousand
Five hundred, eighty five hundred.
Eighty eighty and eighty five hundred all cost.
I I I think that's, yeah, I I I think staff's estimate basically folded in the rental the the rental cost of the civic center space in addition, in addition to things like tents and, you know, other other materials. And so I, Jim, forgive me, I I don't remember if it was you who gave me that estimate. Or or maybe, you know, Rochelle, who has her camera on right now. But does anyone have information as to that particular question, what that estimate includes?
Yeah, so that would be, I'm sorry, is it a key to answer that question, Mayor?
Okay, welcome, Christina, Director Alfar.
Thank you. So that estimate includes rentals and insurance related to the event. And that is consistent with the cost that we have actually expensed in the previous year. So that should be, that's kind of all the the hard costs, not necessarily the soft costs related to staff that are already those costs are already in the budget. So the it would just be potentially some other things may not get done. And I think that's probably more of a Rochelle or Joanne question, if there may be some things that if that's not planned currently that it may result in some additional cost.
I mean, I I think in the fee changes, we added the civic center as a as a rentable space, right? And so perhaps that's included in that estimate. Rochelle, are you confirming that and and nodding your head or is that
Yes, so technically, this event is considered a staff event. So it isn't the same as like a festival or something where we would have fee waiver costs because it is staff putting it on. So it's a city event. So most of that is like rental and insurance of equipment or, you know, the actual insurance costs for putting on the event. And that event has been a part of our department in the past. It just was budgeted somewhere. So it is something that we are aware and have planned on doing.
Okay, and I'm sorry, is is it budgeted in your department right now or is
No, not currently. We were budgeting it through the mayor's fund, but it is something that we can and change for the future and have as our ongoing budget.
Okay, because at least I can speak to twenty eighteen and the current fiscal year and the last fiscal year. Of course, last fiscal year, we didn't have it. But but in twenty eighteen, that wasn't taken from the mayor's fund. I mean, I think that was just kind of kicking it back up. And so so if it's if it's basically a cost center that needs somewhere to land, I'm just asking that we put it into the budget because it wasn't, you know, kind of taken from mayor's fund previously. So let's let's head back to Vice Mayor Chow, because I actually did see a head nod from Councilmember Willie about being the seconder and being
Yeah, I'm happy to include that, so that will be under proximate funding.
Well, let let's ask our city staff to allocate that to the appropriate part of the budget and then
I do have a question. How about the Earth Day? Is that also a staff event? How much is the budget in terms of the hard cost?
Okay, so a quick follow up before we go to Councilmember Willie on on this. So so from staff's perspective, does anyone know the the hard cost budget of the Earth Day Festival, Earth and Arbor?
I, Mayor, this is, I don't know myself, and Andre is one that runs that.
Yeah, answer later. That's fine. I'm curious.
Okay, well, thanks, Vice Mayor Chow. And, you know, I I thank you and Councilmember Willie for being able to, willing to amend your motion to include the the cost of volunteer fair into there. Councilmember Willie, and then we'll go to Councilmember Moore.
Yeah, hey, thank you. Couple of comments, you know, I I share Councilman Moore's concern with how much is too much for city staff. I was drawing the line at about thirty. And, you know, the the comment that I'll make is, you know, the direction we had was five fives, thirteen threes, thirteen ones. And to try and keep it small, yeah, the the zeros that she brought up tonight, I think some of those are mine. Simply trying to not overload staff. So I think maybe in the future, as a preface to the work plan, we kind of decide, you know, how big we think city staff can tackle with the city manager's input. But he he's good tonight, so that's great. I also really like Councilman Moore's suggestion about having us get the status of these special projects. In order for us to be effective, we want to make as much progress as we can and not redo things. But when we show up after we've been elected and we show up, we essentially have, you know, nothing. It's up to us to start digging. And it was through that digging, the the various things, state density bonus law, things like that. The Vice Mayor Chow and I started collecting a lot of material. You and I were on the subcommittee for the attorney fees from Shu Haley and that giant binder. And it was during this time then that we actually got the the bookshelf in the council chambers for me and Vice Mayor Chow to put our binders on with all this information. Hopefully, other councilmen like Wei and and Moore can can draw from that. Are all my binders on that shelf? No. It, I need to kind of load it up. But with that being said, the more history that we have, the more able we're able to to do more for the community with less and not have staff repeating things. One item that's sensitive to me is city staff has done so many surveys. Three years of surveys, secondhand smoke. What do you want to see at Jollyman Park and Lawrence Midi Park? None of that information comes to us, but I'd really like to see that on that shelf so that we could pull out surveys. Yes, they're dated. But starting from someplace, I do a lot of screen captures of those surveys. But the results, I only find out when city staff brings it to the city council meeting and says, we did a survey, we had two hundred and fifty respondents, and these were the ones. But they've done so many more surveys. So just want to put that out there that let's get smarter. Let's let's learn and and try and be more effective. And we'll be helping staff at the same time. But Mayor, you're doing a great job on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. Let's go on to Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So let's see, probably three items I want to touch on. One, under special projects, the the E R P system, one hundred and six thousand nine hundred and twenty eight dollars. With regards to to E R P systems, they can be very expensive, running into the millions of dollars. So while it looks like it's just a hundred and six thousand or a hundred and seven thousand dollars, it's actually something that's there's there's a a large cost associated with it. I I do agree with getting the E R P system, but I think that we need to understand what what it is that this is what we're walking into. So this might look like a a small cost here, but ultimately, it's it's going to be something more. And I see that our chief technology officer is has joined us. So I I do have two other items, so I want to keep the keep the the floor. So if 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 Bill would like to say something, please do it, but I I want to get my other two items in.
Oh, why don't you proceed then, since that's your preference, and then we'll call on Bill to answer your question.
Okay, that works. So I I am also very concerned about the the four hundred thousand dollar or so HUD audit and and what that impact could be. And the the potential C D T F A audit, kind of multi-million dollar reduction in in revenues. And I'm I'm very concerned about both of those items when we're growing the budget. It it makes me want to be much more conservative and and wait and find out what some of the results are going to be before before running off on a shopping spree is how it feels. And lastly, you know, I appreciate the intent intentions of the the Cupertino store. However, I don't feel that the, I believe it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars was allocated for that. My concern is that when we really look at marketing, the the feasibility, the storage of items, having personnel doing the the taxation for selling these items, what kind of accounting is going to be in our in our budget in the future? So I'm going to assume that this isn't going to be some kind of enterprise fund. Somebody's going to have to create that designation for the budget to I I'm expecting in the future, we're going to have Cupertino store with some all sorts of stuff needing to be What kind of Interesting. I get to hear myself twice. So I'm I'm worried about that. I don't think a hundred and fifty thousand is really coming anywhere near what it's going to cost just to to set up a shop. And so we're basically becoming a a small business owner within our own city. And so were there actual did was, did a consultant come in and come up with this a hundred and fifty thousand? How did this this get arrived at? Because I this this barely funds one person's time working on it. And and then on it, if if this does, if in its ultimate fruition, we end up with an actual location with a store, we will have then created, I don't know, two or three low wage jobs and and all that responsibility associated with it. So I I'd like to hear on these three items. Thank you.
Okay, let's start with Director Mitchell. Bill. Oh, Bill, you're muted, so you'll need to
You think the tech guy would know better. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Paul and Councilmember Moore. Great question. So the E R P implementation is actually in three phases. Phase one is needs analysis. Phase two will be R F P development and vendor selection. And then phase three will be the actual E R P implementation. So this money that we're asking for is additional funding for phase one and two. So that's what that is for. We aren't actually going out and procuring. That'll come to you next fiscal year after R F P has been developed and a vendor has been selected, and then we'll be able to move forward. But that'll take about a year, year, years worth of work to go through the needs analysis, R F P development and vendor selection.
Through through the mayor, I was looking at the the E R P page for the city of Sunnyvale. And actually, it was looking like they are grand total, I don't know what they're buying, sixteen million dollars. So any thoughts on that number? It was shocking.
Yeah, I think sixteen million dollars for us is going to be high. I would not be surprised if it's in the million dollar plus range, but I do not think it's going to be sixteen million dollars. I think it's going to be a couple million dollars over a period of three to five years. That would be my estimate at this point.
Thank you very much. And I I don't know if there are any comments on the my concern over the HUD item and the C D T F A. Perhaps the public would like to hear something about that. I I would appreciate it.
So the HUD one, we're still waiting, you know, we sent in a letter and gave the full explanation for the HUD, for their their audits, what they considered about it. And we're still in a holding pattern to hear back from them. We gave them examples of why we think what they were doing was far, truly far too much for a you know, I'll call it simple mistake. And then the C D T F A is one that's, we're still waiting for that to come back to us. We've heard that they're still working with the businesses that are out there. But I really can't get into it too much with that key subject.
Okay, well, let's, a- any other follow up on Councilmember Moore's questions or comments in this round?
The last question I had through the mayor was regarding the the Cupertino store, how how the calculation was done. Because I I'm I'm just thinking about in terms of marketing feasibility, storage taxes, and then the the cost to employ somebody to be taking care of this. I don't think that a hundred and fifty is going to cut it. I think we're going to need a lot more, a lot more funding. And then down the road, if it does open up into a actual brick and mortar location, that's that's even even more more cost to the city.
Okay, thank you for the reiteration of your question. And I see that Tina Kapoor, our Economic Development Manager, has Okay, uh, thank you for the reiteration of your question, and I see that Tina Kapoor, our Economic Development Manager, has her camera on. Tina, did you want to speak to that?
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Um, yes, I, just very briefly, um, and Councilmember Moore, you're absolutely right. Um, there may be additional costs associated with this item. Um, the approximate budget that's been um allocated or requested for this item is is um is really just a, it's an estimate at this point. Um, what we are thinking of um doing with this particular um item, the Cupertino store is actually trying out a pilot, which would be an in-house um project. So Bill from IT is actually working on this, and he may have more information, but we want to see if that's you know, something that we can do in-house before we go to a third-party vendor. And um, at the end of that six-month time, we would have a much better and clearer idea of what the ongoing costs may look like, including the staffing resources that you mentioned. So that's the plan, that's what we're thinking of doing before um, before having like a um, a full-blown plan. We want to try it out in-house and see how that might work.
Um, the, through, through the mayor, was, were, were there any um was there any research to see if another city has a store like this anywhere?
Uh, Mayor, Mayor Paul, Councilmember Moore, I can answer that question. So I have done a little bit of research on that. The cities that I have found that have online stores actually are very large cities, so New York City obviously has some, Chicago has one. And there, there are cities that have an associated sports team with them, have online stores as well. The stores are our size. I have not seen that as of yet. We are still doing our research on this. Uh, you know, it's, it's definitely not a closed issue. We're looking at that. But as um Tina mentioned, we're looking at this as a pilot, to get something up and going, understand what the need is, you know, and and see how the success of this rolls out. And then, if it, if it's successful and we come back, we'll be coming back, you know, second quarter of the fiscal year and looking for more funds if it is successful at that time.
Hey, great, thank you very much, Bill. Thanks, Tina. And uh, let's move on to Councilmember Wei at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Actually, I'm glad um I got you a couple of questions being answered. And um, I'm, I'm looking at this, this is a proposed budget, so a lot of things are going to come back to us and with more details and a lot of pilot programs in there. So I'm, I'm happy with our staff committing their time to do a lot of things that our council has put on the work plan in the CIP. So um, uh, I am okay with um the, the proposal. And I do like to add that um the uh volunteer fair, because that is a really good fair, but it also shows doing any fair, even in-house, that's our staff time for other uh community organizations to do that. They're all on their volunteer time. So um, I, I, I like that volunteer fair. I think it's a really good one to have every year that serve our residents uh very well. So I, I do think, and I want to repeat on the jobs, the two jobs, I get an answer that we can refine it uh some, the job descriptions and work on that. And we, I I admit that there are a lot of things we could do. So adding two jobs to half a million dollars, if we make it really good valuable job descriptions, that could bring revenues back to our uh city, not just, not just uh service our residents. So um, I'm, I'm okay with the budget as proposed. And then I could understand that every quarter, we have adjustment and come back, and we can always have more input and um evaluate projects going forward. And oh, I do want to say something about special projects. I I understand, because a lot of question was being asked and answered on the paperwork already, that it's a lot of operational and then incorporate with a lot of um, uh, special project also include, you know, pavement and this and that. So I think uh, the city budget is more complicated than just our straight checkbook in our, in our home. So um yeah, understanding a study session to understand how it works, it would be very good. Thank you.
Great, thanks, uh, Councilmember Wei, and then we have Vice Mayor Chow.
So I think this is, we're talking about budget. There is a question I forgot to ask earlier. Uh, in part, it probably is a still appropriate, the sister city grant. Uber Nation, we did not fund them. And then I am trying to, but then we were, we talked about, we need to be equitable between the different sister city organization. And so I think other city like the the Toyokawa, they do have an event. They got, get CFP waiver, but they did not get grant in terms of funding directly. And their event is meant to raise funding for the student exchange program that they do fund. And then for the Uber Nation, they are relatively new, be new, so they may need a start, some start, to get started. So I kind of remember that our sister city, we do provide some funding for them. But is it not annual funding? So what, what do we plan to do about the equitability between the sister cities? Um, I wonder if anyone has some insight, or is that something we should look into at some time?
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a, that's a repetitive but but fair question. Um, that that really hasn't been squarely, you know, kind of answered. So um Rochelle, uh, our Assistant Director of Parks. Um, did you have any um commentary on Vice Mayor Chow's question?
I can't speak to the agreements with the sister cities because those aren't in our department, but I can speak to the festivals. Um, both the Toyakawa Sister City Cherry Blossom Festival and the Bubba Nashwar Festival are on the list of festivals for fee waivers. So both of those sister cities have festivals, the other ones do not at this time. Um, so we are basically fair in that section of the festivals.
Did we ever give them community grant for the Toyokawa and the the, any of the other sister city? Did we ever give them community grant?
Um, off the top of my head, I know that Bubba Nashwar has received it in the past. I do not believe Toyakawa has applied for it in the past, but I would have to look into that.
All right, they'd received that last year. Um, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Well, at this point, we have um the motion that's on the table, and um, you know, I'm very appreciative of all my colleagues and all of staff for uh all, all the incredible amounts of work that's been done here. I think a lot of the points, you know, I I will, will take to heart and proceed. Um, but uh, at this time, you know, saying no further comment, I will ask uh that our city clerk uh conduct a roll call vote for the motion that is on the table. Madam.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion as amended uh carries with more voting no.
Okay, well, uh, thank you very much, everyone. And um, as promised, I think that we have uh, the very last item on our original agenda, which I believe was uh, not oral communications continued, but council and staff comments and future agenda items. And so let's start with Jim. Are there any staff comments at this time, Jim?
Um, thank you, Mayor. My staff comments would be to say thank you to the mayor and the council. This was a a very thorough budget. You all asked incredible questions. You brought new thoughts and ideas to the table. And, you know, it's something I want to thank you for, and I'm very happy that we were able to get that approved, so thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Jim. And um, let's go ahead and allocate a few minutes uh each for any uh council comments or future agenda items. Um, would anyone like to start us off on um getting back on track, frankly, with uh the end of our meetings uh with the future agenda items and our comments? I see Vice Mayor Chow has a hand raised. Vice Mayor Chow.
Yeah, I realize we just approved the work program, but then something came up in the public comment on Tuesday that I would like to request. It has to do with project that doesn't quite fit the state restriction on SB nine. For example, a thirty-seventy split, if someone doesn't want to cut their current house in health, but they want to allot split, a smaller lot, but that lot might be good enough for a single-family home. Is there a process for them to do that? And then um, what if they would like, they meet the state requirement, but they do not meet the law, the city ordinance uh restriction, is there still a path for discretionary approval? Because personally, I do think lot split and duplex, if done well and follow the city standard, meet the the neighborhood characteristic and address parking issues should have a viable path. Um, how do we make that happen? I'm hoping that when we have interim ordinance come back, this is something we can consider. I so that I'm making a kind of a request. Uh, I, I don't know if there is time to accommodate. But I think if when we adopt interim ordinance, this will be nice to at least have some information that we can follow. It could be through subdivision map act, it could be through a minor rezoning or some kind of general plane amendment. Um, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. I've made note of your request, and I'll go over with our city manager on on Wednesday. Councilmember Willie, and um, yeah, Councilmember Willie, you're next.
Yeah, I know it's late, but I've had this on my list for quite some time, having uh talked to Sandra James probably about a year ago. The memorial at Memorial Park is, you know, in a state of disarray, the granites have broken, fallen down and broken and stuff. And when I talked to her about it, she said that, you know, the rotary is what created the memorial for Memorial Park. And the person that ran that passed away. And she said she would very much like to hand that off, that whole thing, which was then collected and put in somebody's garage. So I would like a study session or an agenda item on the memorial at Memorial Park so that we can once and for all take care of Sandra Gentry's uh uh pile of stuff, and hopefully get that memorial um repaired ASAP. So I'll leave it at that for tonight. Hopefully, another councilman will support that so that we can uh uh may turn it into either a study session or an agenda item. Thank you.
Okay, thank you uh very much, uh, Councilmember Willie. Uh, you, you know, without um, you know, kind of getting into discussion on it, I I know that this has been an ongoing uh work that Jim's been working on, so I think it would be pretty timely to bring forward a study session in the relatively near, near future. I see that Jim's hand was raised and 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 lowered, so, you know, I take it that I probably covered your point. Um, okay, so I don't see a new hand raised. Vice Mayor, your hand is raised, but.
So I forgot, so I need to ask for a second for that proposal, right?
Um, so, so as I, as I, as I told you, I'll check in with our city manager as well as our city attorney um on the timing of how the SB nine um, you know, ordinance is is uh coming back to us. I know that it is scheduled to do so because uh we passed an urgency ordinance as opposed to a permanent one, and so um, I I will commit to you um that I'll go and take a look what the timing looks like, and so.
Yeah, I think Councilmember Willie raised his hand to second.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Willie, would you like to go on the record as, as seconding the request of Vice Mayor Chow?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Okay.
Yeah, of course, I understand the timing is um staff, staffing resource is an issue, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, based upon, you know, what, what are, um, you know, what are agendas. So um, seeing no further hands raised, um, I, I, again, I want to reiterate our, our thanks to our um our, our community staff, uh, as well as our colleagues on council. And um, you know, we'll uh, we'll, we'll reconvene on uh, on June twenty-first for our next regular council meeting. Um, thank you very much, everyone, once again, and uh, we'll see you then. Meeting is adjourned. Have a great.
Thank you.